Good evening and welcome to the July 5 Isaguac City Council Meeting. Welcome, everybody. As a reminder, we do continue to have our meetings in a remote format. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. First item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome you all to join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is audience comments, and members of the public may address council at this time, in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first, and if you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on a phone, press star three. If you have joined by a computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This can vary by device, and one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you are in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Mayor, no one has signed up in advance to speak, but let me see. We do have a number of members of the public in the virtual audience tonight. So as a reminder to those attending virtually, if you'd like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or let me, the host, know by sending a chat message. I'll just monitor this for a moment. Okay, I do see a hand raised from Mark Clemmons. Mark, I'm making you a panelist now. And Mayor, I believe you may have some additional comments that I cut off.
I do, thank you, City Clerk. So for those making comments, please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals, and while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone for virtual attendees or step up to the lectern if you're in person. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to address us this evening. So I believe, City Clerk, we have Mark Clemmons.
Hi, my name is Mark Clemmons. I live at 1515 Hillside Drive, Sycamores, and I'm the Executive Director of the Downtown Isaguac Association. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'd like to share some hip happenings with the City Council and staff. The Downtown Isaguac Association has had a busy start to the summer with two large events, which were, first of all, the well-attended Fenders on Front Street Car Show. Drones of families came out to celebrate Father's Day, and Front Street businesses reported a boost of sales in that day. And then yesterday, Down Home 4th of July event. Fully recovering from that, Isaguac's celebration of Independence Day happened, and with many of you here in attendance, families flocked from Front Street for the Kids and Pets Parade and then moved over to Veterans Memorial Park, family-friendly activity field. I just wanted to extend gratitude to the various city departments for helping with the planning and coordination of that event, and also a special token of gratitude to the Isaguac Police Department for their presence at the event. After the terrible act that occurred in Highland Park, Illinois, as an organizer, it was a relief for me to see their day of presence, so please thank the staff for me. Moving on, DIA has live outdoor music planned for July. We invite folks to come on downtown, dine, shop, and stroll at various events. Gas Station Blues starts Thursday and runs throughout the summer from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the old Shell Station. The Art Walk and Music Stroll is Saturday from 5:00 to 8:00, July 9, and the Summer Wine and Art Walk is also the following Saturday, July 16. The Parklets, our outdoor dining outside Crowbar and Japan Ginger, continue to be a favorite for diners during good weather. I also hope to have an Isaguac Valley Trolley update pretty soon. Thanks, thank you, and it looks like we're having a good summer now, and I hope to see you all downtown.
Thank you, Mark. That was a great update. Anyone else, City Clerk?
No.
Well, thank you very much. It was nice to get that update from the Executive Director of the Downtown Isaguac Association about some successful events that have happened and some more fun that's coming this way this summer. Thank you for the comments, and as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isaguawawa.gov. Council President Walsh, do you have any emails to summarize on agenda items that we have tonight?
Oh, boy, did we get a lot of emails on these items, so yes, I do. Regarding AB 8364, the Electric Scooter Share Pilot Program, we received three emails of support, which highlighted that they help deal with last-mile problems, tourism, and a way to explore a transportation system at no cost to the city. We also received four emails against highlighting comments about the city being too small, safety hazards, and eyesore, dangerous for sidewalks, dangerous rider behavior, doesn't solve the short-trip issues, and then in our packet, you'll see many of the other social media comments that were summarized. The next agenda item, AB 8422, the Community Investment Strategy, we received five, maybe six, if I add in the one that was just received an hour ago, emails of support highlighting that an Anchor Park project is one that's far enough along to use the ARPA funds and preferring a transformative park project, with several highlighting Tibbetts Park as a good possibility. And that summarizes the emails we received.
Thank you, Council President. We'll move on now to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Council Member Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No reports related to the city directly, but I just want to convey that on June 23, the Garage, the teen cafe over by the Community Rec Center, held a pride event that was structured and put together by the high school students, and I have reports back from people that attended that it was well-attended and people had a good time, and I think it was a great opportunity for our high school students to express themselves in a safe environment, and they really appreciate that Isaguac is a safe city and a city that cares. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Joe. Council Member De Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. On June 21, I attended the Connect2 Community Advisory Group meeting. Just a reminder that this group is a subgroup of the Healthier Here Agency and is working to develop a platform for sharing patient information between medical health care providers and behavioral health care providers in King County. We spent the meeting exploring and discussing potential funding models, and our speaker is the Director of the San Diego Community Information Exchange, which is what we're creating, which has been in operation now for about five years. So it was an excellent presentation and a really good discussion. All other committees I serve on canceled their July meetings, and so that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Council Member De Michelle. Council Member Hunt?
Thank you. The Planning, Development, and Environment Committee met on June 28. We had two items on our agenda, and they both had to do with implementation of elements of the ICAP or Isaguac Climate Action Plan, and specifically, they both had to do with implementation of the plan in the area of clean buildings. The first item was ID 1136, heat pump program for low-income residents, and the administration on this item was requesting approval to proceed with an additional appropriation of $125,000 from the Sustainability Fund for this heat pump program. The committee did recommend to the full council that this be on the consent agenda, so this will be on the consent agenda, I believe, for the next regular meeting of this council, for council's consideration. The committee was in enthusiastic and unanimous support for the program. We also had a representative from Spark Northwest who's partnering on this program there at the meeting, and they were there to answer all our questions about ductless versus ducted systems and all kinds of technical questions that we had. So it was very well-received, and the council recommended this to proceed. On the second item, ID 1188, which was Isaguac Clean Buildings Initiative, for this one, the administration recommended an additional appropriation of $100,000 from the Sustainability Fund, and this, the committee ultimately recommended for regular business at our next regular meeting, and so I will save most of my comments and summary of our discussion for that meeting, since that's when council will be considering it, but we did have a number of questions, and we also had additional information that we wanted back as far as the efficacy of this kind of program and other similar jurisdictions. So when this comes back to council, I expect that there will be more information on that and also an update as far as some of the elements of that program that changed as far as covering municipal buildings, and those were near changes that were discovered near the time of our meeting, so there will be some updated information when this comes back to full council. The next meeting of the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee will be on July 7, and we will have a discussion of Title 18, our Municipal Land Use Code, and specifically, we will be discussing ID 1042, which is the Land Use Code update regarding buildings and site design. So that concludes my committee reports for council committees. And then additionally, there will be a meeting of the Regional Water Quality Committee tomorrow on July 6, and we have a number of technical briefings on the agenda, including one on the Wastewater Treatment Division's Resource Recovery Program. So I will report back after that meeting, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council Member Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors will meet next Wednesday, July 14, at 4:00. The agenda has not been set, and that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Council Member Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm having one of those council equivalents to when you have that dream and you're back in high school and you're not wearing any pants, because I realized that, excited as I was about the Services, Safety, and Parks Committee meeting, I did not prepare a report for that this evening, because it's the first one back, and I forgot to do it, so I apologize about that, so I'll talk about the two things that are happening in the future, which are GMPB meets this Thursday, July 7, at 10:00 a.m. There's really only one actionable item, and it is a potential approval of the Greater Downtown Kirkland Regional Growth Center application, so should you have a strong opinion about Kirkland's Downtown Regional Growth Center, please let me know. I'm assuming that we don't, but we will review it at GMPB. And then the Sound Cities Association will be meeting on Wednesday, July 13, at 7:00 p.m., virtual meeting, and we will be discussing the Clean Water Plan Guiding Principles, as we discussed at our last council meeting in for good of the order. And that unfortunately concludes my report.
Thank you, Council Member Mertz. You get one pass. Deputy Counsel President Hall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No report this evening, though, just a quick heads-up that I have two quick informational items I'll bring up tonight at good of the order. Thanks.
Thank you. Council President Walsh?
Thank you. I'm much the same, no report, but I do have one item for good of the order. Thanks.
That's great. Thank you very much. Next item is the Mayor's Report. There will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI and security of computer and telecommunications networks per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI per N2. These items are expected to take a total of 30 minutes, and no action is anticipated in open session. So I'm very glad that our ED of Downtown Isaguac Association was able to give a report. I wanted to just say how much I enjoyed seeing most of you there. It was a great thing to come back and have the Down Home 4th of July festivities again at the field. Want to thank all of the volunteers and the service groups and the staff who made yesterday's event possible. It was just really nice to gather safely with everybody and enjoy the community. Tonight's regular business agenda includes discussion of a component of the Capital Finance Task Force recommendation. Tonight, the City Council will discuss the American Rescue Plan Act allocation, so I hope everybody stays with us through this regular business agenda item to hear the council discuss its plans on investing the $9 million in our community. Board and Commission Extended Recruitment. Tonight's consent calendar includes AB 8412, Board and Commission Extended Recruitment, and I'd like to thank a number of community members who are interested in serving. We had great response. As part of this extended recruitment, I've made 15 new appointments and look forward to welcoming 12 new members across five boards, including two appointees who previously served on another board or commission, one alternate member being promoted to a regular seat, and two long-serving members transitioning from regular seats to alternate legacy seats, which helps us provide for turnover and continuity. For those who are unable to be appointed at this time, their applications will be considered as other recruitment opportunities occur. We anticipate continued efforts related to the Sister Cities Commission and a new recruitment for filling vacancies on the Planning Policy Commission. My appointments are intended to create the broadest participation possible of the community we serve and to strive for diversity and inclusion. Just a few notes on some upcoming events. Concerts on the Green is back, starting tonight. I'm sorry that you all can't attend here. They will be running every Tuesday through August, so join us at the Community Center Lawn for music and dancing from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. A Midsummer's Night Dream. Please enjoy the Shakespeare classic comedy about love gone awry. The Seattle Shakespeare performance is coming to the Community Center's open space on July 7 at 7:00 p.m. More information is available at seattleshakespeare.org. And Parkadilly is coming back. Join us July 7 at the Lakes Mammoth State Park for the Parkadilly Kids Concert and Fair. Outdoor activities will include arts and crafts, face painting, a petting zoo, games, and food trucks. The event is free, but admission to the park does require a Discover Pass or a $10 day pass, so more information is available at lakesmammothfriends.org. And last, the Chalk Art Festival is back. In celebration of Isaguac's 130th birthday, we invite chalk artists to respond to this year's Chalk Art Festival theme, "Happy Birthday, Isaguac, Looking Great at 130." All participating chalk artists will receive free sidewalk chalk and a ticket for ice cream from the Isaguac Ice Cream Trike. So please come join us July 26 from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Isaguac Community Center. And that concludes the Mayor's Report. The next item of business this evening is the Consent Calendar. It was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have been.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent counter and consider it under regular business? Not seeing any. Is there a motion? Council President?
I move to approve the consent calendar as written.
Second.
Deputy Council President seconded. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none, the motion before council is to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. That carries unanimously. The next item of business is regular business, and we're starting off with AB 8364, Electric Scooter Share Pilot Program Memorandum of Understanding. The ask before council this evening is to authorize, and I'd like to invite Economic Development Coordinator Benton Koblenz and Transportation Program Coordinator John Larson-Friend to make a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Polly, council members. My name is Benton Koblenz. I'm the Economic Development Coordinator for the city. I'm joined by my good friend John Larson-Friend, who will be coming up to the podium in just a couple of minutes, and also online is Michael Covato from Bird, who will be able and available to answer questions that we cannot. So let me just share my screen. So hopefully you're seeing that properly.
Yes, you can.
So, an electric scooter share program is one which provides electric scooters for the public to utilize for point-to-point or near-point-to-point short trips. They've been around for about the last five or so years and are now present in many communities all across the country and the globe. Those electric scooter share programs provide one alternative for the last-mile problem of getting folks from options for transit to their destination or from their homes and points of origin to other transportation options as well. And so they provide an opportunity for residents, workers, and visitors here in the city of Isaguac to get around town. And so tonight, the purpose is to gather your feedback on the proposed Electric Scooter Share Pilot Program for the city. So the recommendation tonight is to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute an MOU with Bird to begin an Electric Scooter Share Pilot Program for the city, and that memorandum, draft memorandum of understanding was included in the packet tonight. So, city staff have been working on this proposed pilot for the past couple of months because we believe that this opportunity aligns with many of the city's existing plans. In particular, the first plank of the city's strategic plan is to make getting around town easier for people who live, work, and play here. That plank in the strategic plan was further elucidated through the city's Mobility Master Plan, which laid out these six guiding principles, including improving mobility within Isaguac, promoting environmentally sustainable mobility options, and anticipating future transformation in the transportation space. We believe that an Electric Scooter Share Program aligns with many of those planks of the Mobility Master Plan and is worth exploring here in Isaguac. So the background for the proposal here tonight is that the city staff were approached in late 2021 by a scooter share provider to expand their program to the city of Isaguac. And so city staff organized an internal stakeholder team to review the viability and any foreseen challenges of such a program for our community. Through several conversations, several different points were brought up as potential challenges to overcome and to be aware of, but overall, the viability of the program seemed possible. And so staff gathered an external stakeholder team to meet with other external transportation partners, including King County Metro, Sound Transit, and King County Parks and Trails, to understand if there were any challenges that couldn't be overcome in the intersection of this proposed program with our partners' programs in the city. Through both those internal and external stakeholder team meetings, there were no issues that were presented that were insuperable. We felt that through careful and thorough program design, all the challenges that were brought up could be overcome. And so, again, in the spring of this year, staff began some initial negotiations over what a potential agreement might look like. In July, staff brought this proposed program to the City Council's Mobility and Infrastructure Committee meeting for review, and the committee forwarded the item to the full council here tonight. And so if this draft MOU is approved and the program is greenlit, it could start as early as this month, and it would continue through the end of this year. That would be the initial pilot program period. At the end of this year, the scooters would likely be withdrawn due to inclement weather, and an initial analysis of the pilot program's success and shortcomings would be conducted, and that analysis would continue into 2023, where staff would make a recommendation as to the permanent and long-term recommendations for the program. So to talk more, I want to invite my good friend John Larson-Friend to talk more about the pilot program's design and proposed operations.
Trying to make some room here. Thank you, Benton. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is John Larson-Friend, and I'm the Transportation Program Coordinator. It's an honor to be presenting to City Council for the first time here at the city of Isaguac.
John, I'm going to get you to lift that microphone up.
Yes, I'm tall, yes.
And welcome, and welcome. Nice to see new faces.
Thank you. So tonight, I will be introducing some of the details of the pilot program proposal. I'll be walking through Bird's proposed operations and equity programs and proposed public outreach. So first, proposed operations. The scooters that Bird currently deploys are the Bird Zero Model. Each are equipped with a headlight, taillight, reflector, battery, GPS, and governed at a max speed of 15 miles per hour. In Isaguac, electric scooters are permitted to be ridden where bicycles are allowed, including bike lanes, bike paths, and any shared routes. Looking at the area of operation, Bird has proposed an initial operating area in the central business district, old town, and business area of the Isaguac Highlands. This operation area is able to be reshaped in any way deemed appropriate throughout the program, and any changes would be a collaboration between the city and Bird. Limitations can also be placed in specific locations within the area of operation, including the creation of slow zones, meaning the scooter would slow down to a predetermined maximum speed, and no ride zones, meaning the scooter would come to an automatic stop within the zone and won't be powered until the zone is left by the scooter. On the map, here, the blue markers are proposed staging areas or nests, which are based on Bird's research of the community, though these can be changed based on need, weather, and other factors that might arise. During daily rebalancing of the scooters, the scooters would be returned to these specific nest locations. And finally, the number of scooters, the number would start at 50 on day one and scale up to 100 during the first four weeks. This number would be evaluated during the course of the pilot based on demand and other factors. Tonight, we also want to highlight a couple of specific areas of interest, so the first one being response time. So a big part of the program would include Bird will pay local contractors to manage the scooter system. A part of this position includes responding to scooter placement issues within three hours of being reported between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. The responses would be triggered by any reported relocation requests or incidents reported by riders or members of the public involving the scooters, and that would include parking, safety, and maintenance. There are, of course, other challenge areas when it comes to scooters, especially pertaining to public perception of scooters. So first, ADA compliance. Miss parking scooters can be an issue if unaddressed, especially if they block ADA access points around the city. As mentioned before, the local contractors would be in charge of responding to any parking issues within three hours of being reported between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Of course, the best way to prevent parking issues is to provide robust education for riders where they can and cannot park when they ride. Bird will provide materials, videos, and signage to promote safe riding in order to educate riders on their responsibilities and encourage safe and courteous riding and parking. It's also important to note that people under 18 will not be allowed to ride these scooters, which is enforced by requiring photo ID to sign up. Moving on to rivers and streams. Unfortunately, scooters have gotten a really bad rap when it comes to the perception that they often end up in rivers and streams. The good news is, is this is a far greater issue when they appeared in cities in 2017. Updated GPS technology, improved operations parameters, and more robust scooters has reduced the problem to very close to zero. Last year in 2021, similar cities to Isaguac saw the number of missing and vandalized scooters drop to just 0.4%. Statistically, when Isaguac reaches that 100 scooter threshold, that would be like having half of a scooter vandalized during the entire year. This, of course, would be something that staff would closely monitor throughout the pilot period. Turning to equity. Equity is of really great importance when deploying any new technology, especially those designed to increase mobility options for the public. Bird provides three different equity programs to ensure greater access for people into the system who might not have otherwise. The first one is the Community Pricing Program. Bird offers a 50% discount to low-income riders, Pell Grant recipients, select local nonprofit and community organizations, veterans, and senior citizens. For the unbanked, or those without bank accounts, Bird supplies- For the unbanked, or those without bank accounts, Bird supplies prepaid codes and cards at local CVS locations that can be bought with cash, thereby eliminating the requirement for a bank account in order to ride these scooters. Finally, they also, Bird also has a way to address language barriers. And, of course, language barriers can leave people out of any new sort of technology. The Bird app is provided in 36 languages, including the top language that's spoken here in Issaquah. And finally, public outreach. Public outreach is an essential part of introducing new modes of transportation to any community. First, planned cooperation. Staff plans to coordinate with Bird on a press release and other public relations initiatives throughout the program to increase awareness and education about the scooter system. Staff intends to use tools such as social media in order to encourage robust engagement. Bird will supply social media campaign materials to be utilized by the city. And also, finally, surveys are also a very important tool in gathering public feedback. We would like to see a city-community survey implemented, and additionally, Bird would also implement a rider survey, which would occur during or after the pilot period. Thank you so much for your time, and I will give it back to Benton.
Thank you, John. So, as mentioned before, we presented in front of the city council's committee on June 14th and are bringing forward this draft MOU tonight on July the 5th. The program could start as early as this month, and we would have a checkpoint at the end of the year and continued program evaluation through into 2023. So, again, the recommendation is to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute a memorandum of understanding with Bird to begin an electric scooter-share pilot program. And we want to thank you for your time, and we're here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Mobility and Infrastructure Committee Chair Joe to see if you want to make some summary remarks from the committee's recommendation on this item.
Madam Mayor, thank you. The committee did meet on June 14th to review this issue. No one on the committee was expressing reservations or was against the program. I think it's fair to say that we wanted to bring it back to the council for additional conversation and to decide whether it was the right program for us and right size for us along the way. And so, I hope that this will be a robust conversation about what Issaquah really needs in this type of situation for the last mile and whether or not this is the right fit for Issaquah as well. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Are there any questions? Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. I don't know if staff could answer this for me. I have two different questions. One is, the MOU talks about the data sharing that will be done, and I was wondering if the city of Issaquah gets that data afterwards to use? And I see some nods which are saying yes, and I think it's important that we get that data. Just for instance, if we see that there are a large number of participants that are coming from Sycamore, for instance, and getting on the scooters and then taking it all the way to the park and ride, it could give us some inkling of, maybe we need to extend a regional bus or a local bus to that neighborhood, for instance. The same could be said for perhaps Squawk Mountain. So, I just want to make sure that we're getting that data. We get it after it's, the program is over, and we have a chance to analyze it and take a look at it.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, there's a mixture of different data that the MOU guarantees our access to. Some of it is in-real-time data, and that would be presented both through Bird's platforms, which they would give us access to, as well as we're working on some partnerships with some regional partners to have even more robust access to some, basically, live feed data, which is very exciting. We'd also have near-real-time data for some of the incidents, which would be reported to us, as well as robust reports that summarize kind of the experience over the course of the entire initial pilot program period. So, yeah, there's a lot of data that I think John is very excited about, as he vigorously nods his head, and that I'm certainly excited to see as well.
Great, thank you very much. Just one more question, if I could. The MOU will be certainly a pilot program. I was wondering if Issaquah gets any of the sales tax from the sales, or Bird, if they have their headquarters in another city, gets that sales tax and how it might work? I'm sorry if that question catches you a little bit off-guard. We didn't discuss it in the committee, but it kind of came up in my mind as I was thinking about this agenda bill. And if it can't be answered tonight, that's fine, too, because it's not necessarily part of this MOU, but just a thought or question that I had.
Councilmember Joe, this is Deputy City Administrator Snyder. I'm wondering if perhaps Robert Hamud, the city's chief financial officer, can provide an answer? If not, we can follow up after this, after this meeting.
Yeah, Councilmember Joe, this is Robert Hamud. Yes, the answer is, when they go to register, and even when they pay, say they go to Walgreens with the program that was, that was described earlier, they would enter a zip code, and so as long as that zip code is entered, at the end of each month when they're filing taxes, Bird would actually pay, you know, a proportion to directly to the zip code. So, we're going to see it. We would see it as a service. So, just like other services, other rentals that are charged to the city, like, say, you go to REI, you rent skis or something like that, we do get a portion of that. It's going to be the same thing.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How does it work with hills? I noticed that you've got stations up in the Highlands that are 100-plus meters above the valley floor. How would it hypothetically work with people potentially transiting both up and downhill non-trivial grades? Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a question, if Michael is available, to address it about Bird's particular model of scooters and what it's rated for in terms of grade.
And, Michael, I've just unmuted you.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, city staff. Thank you very much for having me. I apologize that, for whatever reason, I'm unable to show up on video here this evening. With respect to the scooters, depending on the model, they are rated for between a 15% to 20% grade. For context, we operate in extremely hilly cities like San Francisco or European mountain towns. I have no, no concerns about their ability to traverse the 100 meters of elevation described. Going downhill, there is a mechanical brake available on all of our scooters, so a rider is able to control the speed of descent, similar to what you'd expect on a privately-owned bicycle.
Great, thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Council President, did you also have a question?
Thank you. I notice, as Councilmember Mertz did, that part of the Highlands is included, but not the remainder of the Highlands and not Talis. So, can you talk about how the initial area was decided and whether or not this is just for a pilot or, and we would consider expanding, and what the requirements would be for that?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Oh, I was going to say, Michael, because the city would permit it throughout the city with some rare exceptions, but we wouldn't restrict it from any neighborhoods in particular. But, Michael can talk a little bit about kind of the economic case for what zone of operations they're proposing initially.
Appreciate it. Apologize for the interruption there. Just to provide some additional clarity, it takes us about 15 to 20 minutes to update our geofencing parameters, so we can certainly expand the operational zone quite rapidly as demands dictate. For the initial pilot zone that was suggested, because we will have a lower concentration number of units, in order for people to see this as a reliable public transportation option, they need to be able to find a scooter when they need access to one. For that reason, we simply reduce the initial operating zone to where we anticipated the bulk of utilization to occur. That doesn't mean that we can't expand within a week, two weeks, or a month, even during the pilot period. As I mentioned earlier, demand or ridership dictates.
Council President?
Yeah, can I follow up? Toward that idea, I remember there was a question during the committee hearing about, there's a portion of the trail that runs from Old Town up to the Highlands, and I just wanted to make sure that if we consider this, whether that adjustment could be made so that there wouldn't be any slowdown area on that one area.
Yes, absolutely. We could immediately implement the operating zone to include that.
Thank you, that's my question.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. Just a couple of questions. One is, when looking at the MOU, it has a 1222, or end of December this year, end of the agreement, but it also includes a provision for a one-year extension. What's the thinking there for the one-year extension?
If I may take that question, Councilmember Ray, this is Andrea Snyder again. The thinking is that we would evaluate the program after that pilot period, and we would still want to come back to City Council with the data that we've collected, an understanding of the demand, or of any of the concerns that have been raised during the pilot period. So, before we would consider renewing the MOU for another year, we would come back to Council again, seeking, seeking your approval.
Okay, great. It just would be nice then if the MOU were to say something about council approval instead of administration approval, because that kind of leaves it a little bit squishy to me. So, I know we talked, I watched the committee meeting, and it was great, and the committee did a great job. But, you talked about a little bit tangentially about success criteria. What do you, what would, what would constitute success in your mind, and how would you evaluate those?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember. So, we are, we're looking to Bird to determine if the demand is there. The city isn't operating the program and does not want the scooter, does not want to get into the scooter business, per se. Therefore, it has to be profitable to the service provider, which is Bird. The things that the city would monitor to determine success would be whether or not the scooters are more of a nuisance than a benefit. We would look at reports of scooters in inappropriate places, accidents, responsiveness from Bird, and any other safety concerns.
So, one of the things that kept bubbling to the surface, both in the committee meeting and in some of the emails, was last mile? How would we measure last mile success? Because that's, I mean, that's a big deal. I mean, this is going to be our last, part of our last-mile solution. I'm kind of curious how we'd evaluate whether or not it was being successful.
Yeah, absolutely. So, going back to that, to those data sets that we're going to get, a part of the MOU includes GTFS data, which is the general transit feed specification data, and that's kind of live stuff. So, when you go into the app, you'll be able to see where all the, you know, the scooters are, so we'll kind of have that live data. And then, we will also have, and I think more importantly, is the MDS data, which is the mobility data specification. So, this is that historical data, and all of those, all that data covers when a scooter starts a trip, ends a trip, or is reserved, and then also includes the duration, distance, start and end times, route costs. So, then we would be able to piece that data together and see where the demand is and whether, whether or not it is answering that first last-mile issue.
Very cool. And then, kind of piggybacking a little bit on the council president's, I noticed that the lion's share of our residential neighborhoods are outside the service area. I mean, we really, you know, we don't have Montrose, we don't have Sycamore, we don't have Squawk, we don't really have the Highlands, and we don't really have Talis. So, I mean, it's great, I love Old Town, and it's super cool for them, but what's the thinking? Are we going to have, I guess my thing is, through this pilot, are we going to have enough data to be able to even evaluate whether or not we are successful in meeting that objective?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great question, and I believe that it does come back to that business side of, is it feasible for Bird to operate? And I think that, distracted by sirens, as we, as we are able to see how people are using the scooters throughout the city, and then, you know, working with Bird to, could we expand it here for, you know, and, or expand it here? You know, having those conversations throughout the pilot period, which is the purpose of a pilot, is to kind of test out what works and what doesn't.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Deputy Council President?
Thank you. We talked a little at length about this in committee, but just for residents who might be watching, can you speak to kind of all the different ways that residents can report misplaced scooters? There's by the app, but there are also a bunch of other ways, too, right?
Yes, so, is that, that might be a, Michael? More, Michael, are you there to answer that a little bit more robustly?
Absolutely, would be happy to. We have a 24/7 toll-free number that is available to all residents. There is a sticker on every single scooter which includes that information, so that it's easily accessible. We also have an email address that's regularly monitored by our customer service team and multiple social media accounts that users can, and residents can use to report any issues they may have with a particular unit. Finally, we are the only company to offer a feature that we call Community Mode. If you would like to download our mobile application onto your phone, which is completely free, you're able to scan, photograph, and send geo-coded tickets directly to our local fleet managers, which can expedite the process of ensuring that it is corrected. However, more importantly than that, we do want to ensure that we have our fleet managers, who are locally-based partners, who are helping with the day-to-day operations, checking on every single scooter proactively, multiple times per day.
Thank you. Any more questions? If not, is somebody prepared to make a motion?
All right, I'd like to make a motion. And... I'd move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute a memorandum of, memorandum of understanding with Bird to begin an electric scooter-share pilot program.
Deputy Council President?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded discussion? Council President, followed by Councilmember Joe, and then Deputy Council President.
Thank you. I'm really skeptical, really super skeptical that this is the right choice for Issaquah. I see a lot of potential downsides here for our residents and for our businesses. I think with the proposed pilot location, it is really difficult to understand the effectiveness for last-mile use for many of our population centers, such as Isquah Highlands and Talis, which are very close to transit centers and obviously have this last-mile problem with hills. And I think with a limited deployment area, we're also not able to see what would be more likely one-way trips from a transit center to a home where a scooter would be left in a lower-population, lower-usage area. And so, I think there's a lot of things in that, that I end up seeing and going, how are we really going to evaluate this? That being said, I recognize that I have some bias there in that my trips are usually with kids and so not likely to be on a scooter situation, given that they are under 18. And so, I can recognize that it might be more useful to a certain subset of the population. And I also appreciate the pilot won't cost the city anything to learn about the actual potential users, so I will put myself staunchly in the "I'm skeptical and I am not entirely certain how I am going to vote tonight" camp, and interested to learn from other people, but just putting it out there. Thanks.
Deputy Council President?
Thank you. I'm coming at this from a much different point of view then. So, the way I'm seeing this, first and foremost, I guess, let's take a step back. It's certainly aligned with the mobility goals of our strategic plan. It's certainly aligned with the mobility goals of our strategic plan and with the vision set and the mobility master plan. It is, I think this is too, kind of a part that most of us will have to grapple with. It is a creative solution for the last mile problem for some people right now, as it's designed as a pilot program. But it's also a fun solution for replacing single occupancy vehicle trips in the area, right? So if you're just going to meet someone for a coffee and you happen to live in the service area and you want to get there, it's a great way to replace that SOV trip as opposed to getting into your car. It's definitely not for the person who's like, I think we had some community members worried that, you know, this really isn't for people who are going to the grocery store. You're right, it's not really for those people, and it's not for people that have to, you know, carry around passengers and stuff like that. So there's that. I've, you know, we've also heard the communities concerned with accessibility, about the potential for creating safety hazards for vehicles and bikes and pedestrians, about the potential for ending up in ditches or rivers and streams, along sidewalks or other places that they shouldn't be. So like, I guess to sum up then, you know, like I mentioned in committee, I would definitely have concerns with approving a permanent program tonight, yes. But I think a pilot program will allow us to collect useful information about our mobility goals, about outcomes for our residents who participate, about outcomes for our residents who don't participate too, right? About whether Bird and their subcontractors can successfully manage their fleet and respond to misplaced scooters in a timely fashion, implement no park, no ride, slow zones, work with the community on safe rider and parking education. So I guess how I'm seeing it is, we're able to do all that work, potentially solve the last mile problem for some people, potentially have a solution for reducing SOV trips for some people, ensure community concerns are addressed before moving forward, or just decide that it's not worth moving forward at all after the pilot program is over, all while costing the city nothing, which was already mentioned, except for, of course, the staff time that might go into this. So I think it's an incredible opportunity to take a chance, to learn more about how emerging forms of transportation can support our residents, can support our mobility goals. I'm feeling much less skeptical. I just think that the council, we just need to get it in our heads that it's going to be a solution for some people in some ways, but not for everyone in all ways. And if we're able to, you know, chop bit by bit on our mobility goals, we might actually get there, you know, in a way that's in alignment with how fast we want to get there and how bold we want to be too. So that's how I'm thinking. I'm going to vote yes on it. To the community members that have written in, that I've talked to personally, that have concerns with this, I hear you. I definitely hear you. I think if everything works as it's supposed to, I think all your concerns are addressed and taken care of. So we're going to be monitoring that very closely, and I'm looking forward to seeing all the data that we'll get at the end of the pilot program. And thanks very much to staff for all your work on this.
Thank you, deputy council president. Next on my list, I have councilmember Joe, and I apologize, I went out of order. Typically, the motion maker should have spoken first, so I apologize that I was just kind of counting microphones. So councilmember Joe, you're up.
I wasn't quick on the draw. Sorry about that. I'm going to vote in favor of this, first off. I had some concerns about tax revenue, which were answered tonight by our finance director. I also had some concerns about how the data might be used and whether we would be possessors of that data after it was done, and I appreciate that we'll have an opportunity to take a look at where the rides are coming from and where they're going. I would reiterate deputy council president Hall's comments about this is not a solution for everybody, but it's a solution for a segment of the population that I don't represent necessarily, because I'm over 50. But I would have liked to have used scooters for the Fourth of July event. I was in one location doing some volunteer work, and I would have liked to have gone to the other location where my other volunteers were to make sure that they were okay setting up the start of the parade with all the kids there. You know, it's six blocks, could have done it if I wanted to. It would have been faster if I had a scooter, and I could have zipped around and helped out in that way. So there are uses that the scooters could serve for those trips, as deputy council president Hall points out, within the city where, instead of taking the car from the coffee shop here and heading down towards Safeway, we don't have to get back into our car, we can take the scooter and enjoy the outdoors a little bit. So a lot of things to think about. I would only just caveat my comments with, if we do decide to go forward with a more robust agreement after this, and everything kind of turns out okay, I would ask that we consider charging Bird a fee to come to our city. And we'll have a better sense of how much it's costing us for our staff, for, you know, our monitor, our police, or what have you, after the pilot program is over, but we should take account of those costs. And if it is a, you know, a two-year contract or whatever, we kind of figure out what those costs were and make it an appropriate number to put into the contract in the future as part of the negotiation. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Joe. Next up, I have councilmember Hunt, followed by councilmember Mertz.
Thank you. One of the questions that I had about this was why it's different, or how it's different than things like Uber and Lyft, where Ubers and Lifts can drive around and they do ride-sharing in the city, and they don't require any particular, as far as I know, agreement with the city. And so this was answered by Benton and the city staff, who, by the way, have done a great job answering my many questions on this. And it has to do with the use of the rideaway, and that unlike Uber and Lyft, the scooter programs use the rideaway for parking, for example. So there is a higher bar, in my opinion, with this than something like Uber and Lyft, where they are going to come to our city and there are going to be a ride-share option for some folks, and this is different, because we actually have to go enter into this agreement because they use the rideaway. So first, for me, that does set a higher bar. And then looking at the pros and cons of this program, ultimately, I have a lot of concerns, and they outweighed, in the end, what I see as some of the benefits of going forward with the pilot program at this time. I wanted to recognize the work of the staff and the infrastructure committee. I watched the infrastructure committee meeting, and I thought the conversation was really robust and in-depth, and I learned a lot from the conversation. I then followed up with Bennett, and he answered a lot of my questions, and after all of that, I've come to this conclusion, but it really isn't a, it really isn't a reflection on the quality of the work that was done. So my reasons for not supporting this, first of all, we have received what I would characterize as pretty overwhelmingly negative community feedback. It's characterized as 60/40, I believe, in our pamphlet, but when I look at the sort of quality of the concerns that are expressed, especially, you know, on social media, there's a lot of really strong concerns, and then there's some people who think, maybe this would be an okay thing. So I'm concerned taking this, which will be a very visible pilot, I'm concerned with that sort of amount of, amount of concern that's existing in the community towards the program, that it will not be well-received. I basically don't feel like our community is ready for it. And then looking at the equity framework, I was thinking about it from that lens. I'm very concerned about the ADA issue. I am concerned that these will block access to sidewalks. If you leave them strewn across the sidewalk and a person with a wheelchair or other device has to wait for somebody else to move them, I've seen that happen in Seattle, and I think that's one of these potentially unintended consequences. I think it's great that Bird is committed to this three-hour pickup, but it's only certain hours, and so if somebody calls at 7:30 PM, it's going to have to wait until the next day, and that also assumes that somebody does take the initiative to go ahead and call if it's in a place it shouldn't be. So I think that's an unintended consequence, and I'm very concerned about that one. And then the big one for me is that I was looking at the master mobility plan, and it talks about anticipating transformational change, and that's where scooters come in. But we have a huge list of projects that are in the master mobility plan. This is not one of those projects, and I really feel we need to have the infrastructure in place, we need to have safe bike lanes, we need to have safe sidewalk connections, we have these tier-one connections that we know we have to make, and all of that's laid out in the master mobility plan. And then it says in one of the appendices, anticipate transformational change. And to me, anticipating transformational change like scooters is really about having that infrastructure in place, not about enabling them to just get on the roads as they are. So I'm concerned we don't have the infrastructure in place, concerned we don't have the sort of community readiness for this at this point. And then lastly, it has been said that there is no cost, but I do think that this sort of, there's a cost in staff time, and there's also a cost in terms of, I don't think we can do unlimited sort of pilots like this. I think we should focus our energy and really focus on the things that we think will have a big impact, and I think we have a great list in the master mobility plan. So those are the main reasons, and that all said, it is a pilot. I too will very much appreciate getting the data, and if we go forward with this, I will endeavor to look at it with fresh eyes and consider the data and evaluate it at that time, and I see the value in getting that data as well. So those are my, those are my comments, those are my reasons for not supporting this at this time. And again, thank you for the staff and for the committee who did a really thorough job investigating this.
Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to support it tonight. I see, you know, in, a few years ago, I started to see the rise of scooters in China, when you would see scooters and small motorcycles, electric vehicles, taking a larger and larger share of the transportation flow. And recently, in New York City, I've seen a lot of the use of scooters, and it's a dense environment, and, you know, there's sidewalks, but they're crowded sidewalks, and, you know, it just somehow all works. So I'm willing to give it a chance. I think they have aggressive requirements and expectations around it, but, you know, it's on paper, not a big cost to the city. I share all the comments above about potential city costs. I think the applicant paying the city $500 to help offset the city's cost of administering this program, well, I mean, city staff at this meeting tonight exceeds $500. So, but let's, I mean, I think we should give it a try. I think that it's commendable that the city is looking for interesting ways to break the logjam that we're under, and I think it's a small experiment, and we'll get data, and we'll find out, and if it doesn't work, then we won't keep going on it. But if it does work, it could be a real benefit in our city, and if it does work, you know, I want to see it on Squawk Mountain. I want to see it come up to my house. So that's, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. First of all, I want to echo, the staff work was excellent, and many, many questions have been answered, and answered very thoroughly, so I really do appreciate that. I am a member of the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, and as I expressed when we had that meeting, my main concern has been the public acceptance. We've received numerous comments opposed to the pilot, and I've also had a lot of personal conversations with people, and the bulk of those were also negative toward it. Most of those who have commented against it have said that they had bad experiences in other cities, or they observed, you know, bad things in other cities, scooters left around, and all kinds of things. So I was in conversation with a colleague, councilmember colleague in Redmond, and talked to her about their experience, and she directed me to the report that they released reviewing that. I know some of you just saw that this morning. It's chock full of really good information. But one thing that leapt out at me, and I don't mean to pick things out of a big report, but they started, they started their pilot with indications that they had 60% approval going into it. Well, we know from the report that we received tonight that about 65% of the people on social media are opposed to it. Those are two different things. Let's acknowledge that one survey covered a lot more people, 165 people, I think, responded to that survey, and on our social media feed, we've gotten input from 40, but we are not hearing, you know, public acceptance of this program. So my fear is that, that it will fail before it even gets started, just because we haven't prepared our community. And the other discussion, again, with councilmember from Redmond, again, they had a very positive, if you read the report, they have a very positive 65% support the program. But she did say that the one, or not the one, but the complaint that they've heard the most often is scooters blocking sidewalks for people with wheelchairs and walkers and mobility issues. And to me, that should be included in the equity issues that we're considering. So I would like, I'm going to vote against it. It's, I want to make sure everybody's clear, it's not a forever, no. What I'd like to see is for us to do a better job of explaining this project to the community. That might mean that we have to delay it for a while, but let's bring people on board and explain to them how this is going to work and what this is going to accomplish for our mobility plans. And I'd like to see the equity board weigh in on the proposals around the, you know, the support, the financial supports that are in there, but also on this whole issue of how do we make sure that we're not blocking people with disabilities from using our sidewalks because of scooters? I think it's a, it's a big issue. So, and I want to also say, personally, I support it. If it were up to me, and we weren't paying any attention to public input, I would vote yes tonight, but I just, it's been, as councilmember Hunt said, it's overwhelmingly negative. And I think we have to do a better job of explaining this to our community and getting them ready, so that when it does appear, there is at least, people are at least feeling that they've got an open mind and they're willing to see how it works. And I don't think, I don't hear that right now, so I'm feeling bad about this, but I'm going to vote no tonight on this.
Thanks. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I very intentionally wanted to go last, because it's very similar to council president, or Walsh, old habits. I was not sure how I felt about this. I could see both sides of this equation, and I wanted to listen to my colleagues and hear their points of view. So, you know, for me, the most compelling reason to do this is really a creative and innovative solution to the last mile problem, and that sounds very compelling to me. The fact that it's a pilot, and it's not forever, and we'll have data, and if we hate it, we can, you know, not continue it, and if we love it, we can move forward, that's great. I also, deputy council president Hall's point that it's not the solution for everyone for everything was also good. So that's kind of on my upside. On my downside, the lack of public support is glaring, and if we do it, you know, my life experience says, when you don't have support for something and you go ahead and do it, people will find every possible reason to nitpick you to death. So you don't get any grace. So I wanted to factor that in. But ultimately, for me, the biggest issue here is around whether or not this can address our last mile problem. And I'm not convinced that the pilot is going to give us the data to do that, because we really don't have a good cross-section of our community identified in our pilot. So with the current pilot area, I just don't think we'll get the data to say, yeah, it's going to be great on Squawk Mountain, and then the last mile's going to be, you know, a big benefit there. So that concerns me a lot. And then ultimately, I think about it, a full deployment, and I spent a lot of time driving from my house that last mile to the park and ride, and I thought, well, if there was a scooter at the park and ride, I could take the scooter home, but then I get home, and then what would I do with it? And then the next morning, I was like, huh, I want to take the scooter to the park and ride. It's like, oh, they came and collected the scooter that I parked in front of my house. So I, unless we go with really dense nest deployment, I don't see how it's going to work for last mile. So I really appreciate the innovative, creative, and, you know, solution to that last mile problem, but I don't know that this would get us where we want to go.
Any final comments, or round two comments from anybody? Council president?
Thank you. I've listened to everything, and I think I've come to the conclusion that I will be voting against this, and I think the primary reason, or the thing that really stuck out from comments I heard-
I heard, is I just don't think we have the bicycle lanes and the other ways to make this a safe implementation. And I think if we look at our ability to have safe ridership, we need to make that a priority before this can be an effective program, even as a pilot, from my standpoint. So, thank you.
Any other second round comments? Okay, I will reread the motion. This motion is to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute a memorandum of understanding with Bird to begin an electric scooter-share pilot program. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Raise your hands, too, that would help me.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The motion fails on a vote of three ayes and four nays. So I want to also thank staff as well, Michael, John, and Benton, for all the work that you did on this, and I think what you're hearing is that it may be just not yet. So anyway, thank you very much for all that you did. We'll take a short 10-minute recess, it's 8:11, we'll come back, nine-minute recess, we'll come back at 8:20.
We're just going to test our microphones here and see if we have an echo. It sounds better now. Okay. Don't even know if I could keep my thoughts straight if I heard that echo. The next item under regular business is AB 8422. It is the community investment strategy. And this item was last before council at the June 27 Committee of the Hole meeting. And we are looking for some direction this evening. Before Deputy City Administrator Snyder comes up, I would like to share a few opening comments as I did last time at your Committee of the Hole. So, good evening, council staff and members of the public. I would like to take a few minutes tonight to expand on my earlier comments related to the work of the Capital Financing Task Force and the city council's work on a capital financing strategy. I realized after your initial conversation last Monday that I could have probably set the table a little bit better for you to focus the conversation on one element of the task force's work, which you will be discussing tonight, and how that one component relates to the overall strategy that the task force recommended. Regardless of whether the American Rescue Plan Act funding was available to cities or not, I had planned to commission this task force to tackle some of the frustrations we have felt over the last decade or so on the pace of our capital investments in this community and the number of unfunded projects that seem to cycle up and down the list. Given that we have so many infrastructure needs across the city, how do we prioritize amongst transportation, parks, and trails, and city facilities? I was seeking the task force's thoughtful input on these challenges, and I agree with their main recommendations: utilization of a transportation benefit district to fund a higher level of transportation capital improvements; consideration of a parks district to provide a connection between the park strategic plan and how the projects and programs could be adequately funded; and review of the ending fund balance policy and recommendations on whether or not additional amounts should be targeted toward advancing capital projects. Each of these large questions were well contemplated by the task force and could dramatically improve the city's ability to deliver projects to the community. Adoption of any or all of these actions can provide funding resources year over year to our city's capital program. I'm excited to present these recommendations to council for your consideration. They are all big changes and can be highly impactful going forward to increase our capacity to deliver projects for years and potentially decades out. I also added the ARPA allocation, or American Rescue Plan Act allocation, to the city of Issaquah as an additional discussion item for the task force. While this is one-time money and must be spent on a specific list of items within a two-year timeframe, it is wonderfully suited to make an impactful kickoff to the city's capital financing strategy. I'm excited that our community investment strategy can leverage the ARPA funds to get started investing in our community right away. Now I'll turn it over to DCA Snyder for tonight's presentation. Andrea.
Thank you, madam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One second while I share a presentation. All right, good evening, council and anyone who's watching from home. I'm the Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder, and I had the pleasure of working with the Capital Finance Community Task Force leading up to this conversation. Also with me tonight are Jeff Watling, our Parks and Community Services Director, and Robert Hamud, our Chief Financial Officer, who you saw a little bit of earlier this evening. So, tonight, we plan to follow up on some of the council comments, questions, and feedback that you asked last week at the Committee of the Hole. We also, as part of that, wanted to provide more information about the anchor parks investment that's proposed within the community investment strategy. We wanted to provide some more information about city debt and debt financing. That was also a question that was raised last time. And discuss the changes to the proposal based on the council feedback that we heard last week. And finally, we do have some motions. There are three motions for council's consideration that the administration is proposing for this evening. So, that would help finalize the action and help us move on to the next step towards implementation. But first, before we get there, I wanted to take a step back and similar to what the mayor said in her opening remarks is, provide a little bit more context. One of the things that we heard last week was questions about how the task force recommendations were used to develop the community investment strategy. And particularly, there was questions raised about how the administration came to propose such a high and immediate investment in parks if transportation was the number-one priority. So, how did those things come about? And first, I would say that the task force really focused on the long-term funding strategy for our capital projects. And so, they were looking over the long term. And they recommended that if the city needed to go to the voters for additional funding for this infrastructure, that transportation would come first, before parks or other needs. Parks would come second. And so, that's reflected in the timeline that you see here with transportation ballot measure being considered no sooner than 2024 and a parks district potential ballot measure considered no sooner than 2026. The difference here is that the administration is proposing to move up that parks district conversation. So, instead of having it over the six-to-nine-year term period, if we can move it up sooner, then that's what we are trying to do. Second, the task force provided no recommendations for how the city should expend its ARPA funds, or American Recovery Plan Act funds. And they provided no recommendations for how the city should spend its ending fund balance. They wanted to leave that up to city council. Instead, they provided some criteria that could be used in these discussions for consideration. And these criteria are things that we believe are reflected in the proposal from the administration. Criteria such as the desire to have a really big impact in the community, to have a large return on investment for the dollars spent that it's really felt immediately by the community. Also, a desire to focus on life safety items, that it would address a pain point across the city, and that it was ambitious and visionary. These are just some of the criteria that they had recommended be used when selecting projects in the future and also helped them select their priorities when it came to the capital infrastructure. So, finally, as Mayor Polly said, this strategy here is really more than ARPA. It is a long-term answer to how the city will approach our long-term infrastructure needs. Instead of looking at a long list of projects on the CIP that we can't fund and have no plan to fund, which is kind of what we've been doing for a while. So, this strategy is laying out how do we respond to some of those needs that have gone unfunded? And how do we increase our investments in infrastructure? ARPA is a great gift. It's $9 million that we're talking about tonight. Wonderful thing to happen, and it's a big deal. But compared to the long-term strategy, it's kind of a drop in the bucket of what we're talking about in terms of future investments that we can make in our infrastructure. And there is a lot more that's in this timeline that we expect to happen past 2024 that would lead to those infrastructure investments. So, ARPA is really important, and it's an important part of the discussion tonight. But it is really just the start. It's something that we can leverage for this strategy and something that we can use to really kick off our investments in infrastructure. So, I hope that addresses some of the questions of how we came to recommend a large parks investment and how we feel that we have reflected some of the task force recommendations in this proposal. So, moving back here, council feedback. I just wanted to go over what we heard last time from council. It was a great discussion that we had at the Committee of the Hole. And so, thank you for that great discussion. We heard a lot of great feedback. And you'll be seeing some changes in the proposal because of that feedback. So, overall, the green checkmarks here denote things that we heard kind of positive about the proposed strategy. Yellow's kind of caution, you know, maybe mixed support, some concerns raised. And so, we heard overall support about the I-90 Crossing study with ARPA funds. There was a council member who expressed a desire to allocate more funding for that study. We heard a support for a community investment fund and a public outreach process to select projects that would be funded by ARPA funding. And some desire to maybe increase that funding, but overall support for that process. We heard that there was support for spending down the undesignated general fund ending fund balance to more than 15% of expenditures versus 20% or greater, which has been our habit. And that we heard support for spending down the ending fund balance towards infrastructure, investing in infrastructure. And we also heard general support for additional positions that we've asked for in order to be able to take on these additional infrastructure projects. Concerns were expressed about long-term funding of these positions. And as we stated in the memo and some of the materials that we feel we can transfer or, in the future, fund these positions using general fund dollars and/or grant dollars as they become available. Here's where we heard some concerns or more mixed support. We heard mixed support and concerns about the proposed immediate investment of ARPA funds in an anchor park. We heard concerns that, you know, transportation maybe should be our number-one priority. And we heard that there's more information that's needed for council about that parks investment before certain council members can provide support. And so, that's one of the things that we're going to be following up on today is more information about that project. And we also heard concerns over the proposed timeline for considering ballot initiatives and messaging to the public about the potential ballot measures, not wanting to talk about a transportation ballot measure at the same time that we would talk about a parks district ballot measure, for example. And so, and we also heard concerns that maybe this timeline seems a little aggressive. And so, you know, I'd like to remind council that we're really talking about, these are kind of target dates for us to start these discussions. There's a lot that we need to consider in terms of timing for the ballot measures. But the administration wants to put a mark on the map and say, "This is when we think, you know, no sooner than this date." But we certainly want to start having these conversations instead of kicking the can down the road year after year and continuing to have a long list of unfunded projects that we can never build. So, that is a very high-level summary of council member feedback. It doesn't incorporate every single comment that we heard, but more of a general sense of comments that were shared among more than one council member. So, back to this timeline. Just as a quick reminder and refresher of the components of this timeline, there's a number of actions that we're suggesting to take in '22 and '23, but it goes all the way to 2026 when we talk about the soonest possible tie-in that we would want to contemplate a parks district proposal ballot initiative. So, there's a lot in this timeline for when we would fund or when we would consider that transportation ballot initiative. And of course, also, the more immediate investments that we're looking at from ARPA or ending fund balance funds. So, from there, I would like to introduce Director Watling.
Thank you, Deputy City Administrator Snyder. Thank you so much for that. Good evening, council, mayor, Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Services Director. So, as was stated, I'm here to provide an overview on the anchor parks. Again, apologize that I wasn't able to make it last Monday night. Was double-booked with a park board meeting as well. In providing an overview of the anchor parks, though, I don't think any conversation about those three parks, its origin, its beginning, really starts with the park strategic plan that, as a city, you all as a city council adopted in July of 2018. That plan set a new approach to a park strategic plan, whereas historically, the park plan was very much a park-by-park, sort of a very, not even scientific, but a singular look at every park. How many slides do we have? How many ball fields do we have? The desire that plan was to really set a bigger vision and a bigger understanding of how this community wants its city park system to perform and how to make the actionable steps, turn that into an actionable plan that starts to look at near-term, midterm, and long-term investments to create a city park system. I say "city park system" because I think it's important to note, we are surrounded by some amazing park systems in this community. But a state park system, a county park system, a natural resource system of DNR, those are not city park systems. A city park system is expected and, in many ways, needed to perform differently for its residents. Typically, it's serving a denser population. It's serving a mix of interests. It's serving residents who not only want to bike and hike, but others that want to make sure their kids play soccer or baseball or any collection of sports. Or serving and supporting business districts that want to have public spaces that lean into the private space, that provides a place for people to gather as they walk into an urban area or walk through an urban area. And so, the park strategic plan really sought to try and paint that big picture for the city system. There were five themes, as this slide shows, that really became the key threads and the key messages that we heard over and over again from the community when we did outreach in 2017. I highlighted the two themes, placemaking and connectivity, because they really, those two really centered upon and began to draw out these three parks that became priorities. Placemaking, and if I was to quickly read from the park plan itself, placemaking says, "Collaborate with the community and reimagine and reinvest in Issaquah's public spaces, parks, and trails. Maximize value and strengthen the connection between people and parks and the trails that they share." The community wants and really desires, through the park plan, its current parks to do better, to perform better. There was an understanding that they're aging and beginning to get tired. They're seeing other amenities in other cities that our city parks don't necessarily have. And so, that idea of placemaking of, "Let's not just seek and build new parks. Let's take the parks we have and help them to perform better." And then connectivity really speaks for itself. Connect our parks and public spaces to make a unified system that serves the entire city and beyond. Again, a lot of work has been done. The idea of the Creek Corridor really began to come out of that theme. Here's an opportunity to unify a north-south connection. So, from that work, these three projects came to be identified. And were not only identified, but were seen as near-term priorities. Those three projects, being Veterans Memorial Park, Tibbetts Valley Park, and the Creek Corridor, are all identified as near-term priorities to begin to set a vision. That planning and vision, again, was sought to be done in the near term. And understanding, and the park plan really tried to identify this, any investment, full investment in any of those is not going to happen in one shot. It's going to require phased development over a longer term. The term "anchor parks" was created as a reference for those three parks and really the key elements that they are, not only to the whole Issaquah system, but in particular, the Issaquah city system here on the valley floor. And then, with that work, as we went through the capital improvement plan, the CIP process, funding was adopted for master planning for that work, for those anchor parks in 2019 and 2020. A little bit about that community engagement that took place. We really began that work in earnest in the summer of 2019. Hard to imagine, pre-pandemic, we actually did things, but there was a lot done before 2020. We really had some fun ways of engaging with the community, whether it was at our concerts in the park, some Saturdays at the farmer's market, a number of other neighborhood-based engagement efforts. Really got tremendous feedback through that summer and fall. In February 18 of 2020, we had a chance to update all of you. There's a link that I think is part of this presentation. If you want to go back and take a look at both that staff memo and the presentation, it really tried to lay out what we heard from the community. It also began to lay out next steps unbeknownst to us that a month later, the world dramatically changed on us in terms of the pandemic and, obviously, our response to the pandemic over the last two years, some of the staffing changes we needed to make. And really, the feeling of administration and staff was, as we navigated that pandemic, that wasn't necessarily the time to have visioning conversations with the community about long-term investments. And so, that really pushed pause on this work. Where we really feel poised now with planning money already budgeted for this work to continue, as well as some design work. We didn't necessarily want to initiate that work until we had this conversation. And really, should you decide to make an investment in anchor parks, that feedback, that direction, will really help us shape what our next steps of community engagement looks like. The goal through this whole process was to begin the visioning with all three parks, but understand they're going to need to really begin community engagement work park-by-park. So, if there's a park identified, that park becomes the priority project moving forward. Sorry, I keep clicking the wrong button. Another question I heard from your really great discussion last week was really asking that policy question. Why? Why invest in anchor parks? Why invest in these opportunities? I would say in that first bullet, and I think you all know this, parks, though sometimes seen as fun and games, are much more than fun and games. And especially when it comes to a city park system. The role that public spaces need to play and that communities want them to play as really essential public infrastructure in a city system, they do so much more and they support so much more. I think it's safe to say that these three potential park investments and park spaces, Tibbetts, Veterans, and the Creek Corridor, are tied to numerous, if not all, of our city strategic plan priorities, whether that's economic and social vitality, whether it's the environmental goals, mobility, certainly being tied to connectivity, growth and development as we position these parks to serve our current residents as well as future residents. The next three bullets really just, I think, in effort, try and spell out a very high-level understanding of the location of these parks and why they were seen as priorities, not just because they are some of our bigger city parks, but they're really strategically located and have a proximity to do some pretty powerful things for this community. Imagine, if you will, a renovated Veterans Memorial Park would really go a long way to ensuring a vibrant and resilient Front Street in historic downtown for generations. A renovated Tibbetts Valley Park will directly benefit. And in many ways, I think it'll help incubate Central Issaquah and some of the redevelopment goals of Central Issaquah. A connected, unified Issaquah-Creek Corridor will help foster an immensely walkable and vibrant community that it really, in many ways, already is, but will just reinforce that. So, again, just examples. Whether investments are made through ARPA with this or, as the mayor has so well said, this is a longer view as we look at positioning these city parks to perform how we want them to perform. There's tremendous potential in all of these. The last bullet, I want to touch on the seventh-generation principle. I think you might be all aware of what that is. But it's a very wise principle and practice done by the indigenous peoples and tribes of this area and, in many ways, indefinitely, the traditional stewards of this very land we're talking about. The principle really was a very disciplined way of asking, "In every deliberation, we must consider the seventh generation." And I want to note that and acknowledge that as those that have come before us. But the wisdom in that, and a lot of what we're trying to do in this planning effort, that we're looking and talking about a near-term investment, it really starts with taking that longer view and understanding investments we make in public infrastructure have a legacy that long outlasts any of us. And then, last thing to note really quickly, and you always have to be careful when you notice case studies or examples. The pictures you see of Estor Short Park in Vancouver. I know some of you might have been at the AWC conference in Vancouver, Washington. I'm not saying Estor Short Park is going to be plopped into Issaquah, but as a case study, if any of you know Estor Short Park, it was a tired, dilapidated, a lot of unsanctioned and very illicit things happening in the '90s in that park. The city decided to make a reinvestment and re-envision that park to go there now, to see the hotels, to see what has happened. The vibrancy that is in and around that space really speaks to what public investment and private investment really leaning on and supporting one another. Again, sorry, I went the wrong direction. All right, so, real quickly, I will sort of give an overview. These visuals are also intended just to speak to more the opportunities of each of these specific places. Already touched on them a little bit. Again, they speak to the bigger vision. I would want to certainly understand that if a Phase 1 is considered, it's not completing all of this. It's really working with the community to identify what's that first small investment. So, Veterans Memorial Park. These combined park spaces of Veterans Depot Park and Pedestrian Park really serve and can become the public heart of Old Town. They're currently rather disjointed and, in many ways, pretty tired in their age of investment. There's a real opportunity for creating a much more cohesive and updated public space and park space that brings significant economic benefits to Front Street and downtown Issaquah, historic downtown. Would also note, with the connection of the Rainier Trail, this park is immensely well-positioned as well on the Issaquah-Creek Corridor. So, why this planning effort is tied together in that these projects, though separate, certainly have a relationship to one another. So, some of the visuals that our consultant team, the landscape architect, Methune, did as we were doing that planning work in 2019, really begins to show what a unified space can begin to look like. Please, as you look at these, these are not meant to be final decisions, we feel, should there be an opportunity for proceeding with this park or another one. These become a good starting point for finalizing that visioning work with the community and really helping the community to identify what a Phase 1 investment would be. Tibbetts Valley Park, very strategically located, not only just south of Central Issaquah, but strategically located in support of the current neighborhoods of Squawk Mountain, newer neighborhoods of Talus. This park is very singular in its programming. It's five baseball fields. To go there on a summer day when there's no game scheduled would show you. It's a very underperforming park. It's a great performing park when there's baseball games scheduled. I love baseball. But a community park like this that's going to be next to a more dense community is really needing to and has an opportunity to serve a much more diverse role. I would note, there are, with the creek, great opportunity to connect environmentally, but there are some environmental conditions that we're going to need to be careful to and really pay attention to as work like this continues. Much like any of these projects, you know, we would look at doing a Phase 1 that really positions and understands there's need for future phases to occur as well. Similar to the visuals of veterans, these were done by Methune. Again, to try and paint a picture and show how does Tibbetts Valley Park still be a wonderful athletic complex, but also begin to be positioned to serve a much more diverse set of interests and be a park that, on a summer day when there's no game scheduled, it's still an it's still an immensely well-used public space. The third park to, or the third sort of project to give a little bit more detail to is Issaquah Creek Corridor. This is a, this is an investment, this is a project that's been in the makings for decades. Hats off to US Council and prior councils for the last 40 years. There's been investments being made that really begin to spell out this amazing opportunity to connect and unify from Lake Sammamish all the way to the southern border. A series of public parks, a series, a network of public trails that could really do amazing things for this community. Some of the early work and early concepts, we really, as we worked with the community, identified three reaches. Some of the planning work that we would want to do and expect to do in the coming years, whether this investment occurs or not, is to really look at each of those reaches. What we call the Pickering Reach, the Northern Edge, Pickering Barn being an amazing gateway between the state park and the rest of the city. Old Town Reach, right here in the heart of Old Town. And then, the Squawk Valley Reach to the south. As a non, whereas the other, the other projects are parcel-specific, this is a citywide network that has a much higher level of complexity, a much higher level of opportunity, but complexity as we think about things like how do we make initial investments prior to 2024. So as we look at considerations, and I know in conversations and deliberations as you all talk, or if you're seeking the park board to provide a recommendation, we really see these considerations in many ways as potential criteria for how we could facilitate a discussion around which, which project may make the most sense for an initial investment. These considerations include, what's the project readiness? Really to the point of, is this a single parcel that the city already owns? Is it multiple parcels? In some cases, the city doesn't already own. Are there critical areas and other really important site conditions to look at that bring a level of complexity with them and could affect timeliness? What is the level of immediate economic benefit? What's the level of community access and benefit if we're seeking to make this investment? Does this investment, does this park connect to other parks? Thus, sort of multiplying that benefit. And then, in any of these projects, how, as we work with the community to identify a first phase, how are we also keeping in mind future phases? A really important part of phasing any, any public project. Next step, should, should an investment be chosen into one of these parks, would look the same. We would like to take this year and hit the ground running. So 2022, identify that specific part, park. Take the work that we did in 2019. Complete that visioning work on that park through community engagement and help the community determine what the scope of that Phase One is. We think that could make a better project, quite frankly, what community engagement does. That would lead us into design and permitting through 2023 and then hitting the construction window in 2024. And I think, it's back to you, Andrea. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. And actually, I'd like to turn it over to Robert. The chief financial officer has some information to share on debt and debt financing.
Thank you, Andrea, and glad to see everybody in person for the first time. Apologize for circumstances that we couldn't do it earlier. Did want to try to answer council member Ray's questions from last time regarding general obligation debts. I'm just going to talk about that really briefly here. So council did approve a $2.7 million general fund partial repayment of the 2019A LGTO bonds for the Burgisma land purchase, and that was in the 2022 budget. So that's the first thing we did. And then, we had the 2009B fire station property bonds were paid off in 2021. And the Highland Park 2014 facility bonds would be, will be paid off in 2024. So we're actually retiring debt. The city's in a very good position right now. And on the next slide, just want to show you kind of just a snapshot of where we're at. And then, I'm going to talk a little bit about the debt environment. Right now, as of January 1, 2022, the city had $14,435,876 of general obligation debt. Then you less the Burgisma partial repayment there, which was about $2.67 million. Our annual debt service beyond that's now down after that repayment is about $845,000. And so, if you compare that to our total general fund expenditures, which would include the debt service as well, our debt service right now for general obligation bonds, and again, this doesn't include the LID district. This does not include the revenue bonds from the utility, just general fund. It's about 1.3% of the total debt. So we're well below our debt capacity. The city's in a very strong financial position right now. So the good news is we don't have a lot of debt. The good news is there is capacity for future issuances right now. Of course, if there's any bad news, it's what environment we're in, what is the debt environment looking like? And I thought I did have, I'm going to jump ahead here and I'll go back a minute to the debt level. But we're actually looking at, you know, what issues would look like. I actually spoke with the bond council last week and also talking to our financial consultants. So there's different mechanisms out there. And one we're exploring right now, because we have a building, for example, at the public workshop that we're looking to, to build that's about $5 million that was approved in the CIP. And that building, we were looking at the local program. So what this is, is the state treasurer program. And I have the link here on this slide, should be hyperlinked. And the local program-
I think you have a question, Robert.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you go back to the general fund-supported debt that you were showing just a minute ago? There. How, how does our annual debt service hold constant as our debt, as our total debt goes substantially down?
So again, we have fixed debt payments. I think just the way it was structured, we have fixed annual debt payments. So it's pretty consistent until we do a refunding or until those bonds are retired. So that's how it was, it was just negotiated with the sales, I believe, in the past.
Okay, thank you.
But just for comparison, with those retirements and with the refunding we did a couple of years ago, in 2019, I believe, that the debt was over 1.5 million debt service. So it has dropped significantly in recent years. And I can go back to that slide if anybody has more questions. But I just wanted to explain out there, because right now, and I just took a quick look at just recent issues. So right now, because of interest rates, recent issues are hitting local governments pretty rapidly. So if we went to market, say, last year, we'd be in the twos still, high twos for issues. Now, recent issues are at high fours. And that's probably, those are probably negotiated actually before the last interest rate hike. So we're looking at five in the open environment. And one program, again, available to the city is the state treasurer local program. And they have fixed interest rates and they have projects financed through the, through the state treasurer's office itself. So we actually use the state's debt and we use the state's debt rating. It's a very good program. It's actually underutilized by other municipalities and governments within the state. So for this $5 million building we're looking at in Public Works, instead of going to market, it just doesn't seem prudent to go to market, obviously, for that amount. So we did contact the local to get more information. And their rates right now, they have three issues a year. Their rates for the ending of this year is actually still in the twos, still the high twos. So they're almost two basis, or 2%, 2% less than what the, what the bond market is right now. So this is a program I don't recommend because it just hasn't been done much to use it for, you know, larger projects, large-scale projects, but certainly smaller debt issuances. We're looking at this program to, you know, avoid going to market, avoid having a credit rating for the smaller issues. So that would free up council, obviously, to look at the bigger issues, the bigger debt issuances like we looked at in future, you know, more of the three-to-five to even seven-year outlook. Any questions on that? So I wanted to go back here to the fund balance projection. I know we've showed this at the committee of the whole meeting. And I know we've explained this a little bit before. So we're going to come back to you, meaning finance. Susie and I will be coming back to you both at the retreat and at an August council meeting to kind of discuss what our forecast is for the future and what we're looking at. But part of that also is kind of seeing our performance right now. It's still in a complete picture, but honestly, the city is on very solid footing this year. And so, bearing any kind of crisis, anything that's not anticipated, even with the current kind of uncertainty in the economic condition, Issaquah is still going above average. And we're actually kind of outcompeting and not having the same issues that some other local cities in King County have had recently. So we're still seeing strength with our sales tax, strength with our utility tax, strength with our revenues. And so, we're very confident that this number, you know, would go up, not down as far as our forecast right now for the amended budget. And again, we will come back to you if we thought, you know, that would change in the future. But again, we're very confident in these numbers. If anything, they would go up a little bit. So we do, you know, we recommend this fund balance discussion going forward. We're very confident in this number. Thank you. And I'll be available for further questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Andrea, did you have some additional comments?
I, yes, thank you. There's more to the presentation. So changes to the proposal from last time. So we are proposing, based off of council feedback, that we were not providing initial investment in transportation, enough of an initial investment of transportation. What we're proposing tonight is that we increase that original proposal from about 1.5 million in transportation to 5.8 million for immediate transportation-related improvements. Those improvements include $2 million for a community and for the community investment fund. We talked about this last time. The change to the proposal is calling it the Community Mobility Investment Fund. So really focusing that outreach to the community, the surveying process for them to select projects, really focusing that on mobility-related improvements. Before, what we had proposed is that we would look at maybe some transportation-related improvements or maybe some parks-related projects for the community's consideration. And now, based off of council's feedback that we weren't doing enough for transportation, that we would really focus that community outreach process and that fund on mobility-related improvements. So that's a change since last time. Also, I wanted to highlight, there's, as you can see, different colored font in this presentation that's kind of a brownish color. This is a correction from the materials as they were published in the packet. So I wanted to highlight that change and note that change for you. So what we're proposing is $2 million of ARPA funds towards mobility, the mobility network deferred maintenance. In the packet materials, we talked about that money coming from ending fund balance. What we're suggesting is that comes from ARPA. This avoids some of the most onerous ARPA commitments. Maintenance of our infrastructure is something that can be funded with ARPA funds and is ARPA-eligible. And so, when we talk about mobility maintenance, mobility network maintenance, what, the example that we provided in some of the packet materials are sidewalk maintenance, for example. We understand that we have a lot of, of reports from the community of uneven sidewalks and concerns about improving the sidewalks. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in terms of maintaining them. And this would provide a really nice investment in better maintenance of the sidewalks. Also, $400,000 from the general fund, undesignated ending fund balance towards this need as well. Like I said, in the original, in the proposal that we provided in your published packet materials, we had said that that would, 2.4 would come from ending fund balance. What we're saying is 2 million of that from ARPA, 400,000 again towards, towards maintenance from ending fund balance. Also, part of these transportation-related improvements, $1 million for the I-90 multimodal crossing study. That's no change from last time. And 458,000 for those new positions to support increased transportation capital projects. Again, no change from the last proposal you saw last week. So that's overall increased investment and focus on transportation with a variety of sources of funds. More changes to the proposal in regards to parks. So that's 6.1 million slated for immediate investment in parks and trails. This is an unchanged total amount. But some of the details of how that money would be spent have changed. That includes taking that $6 million anchor park investment that we proposed last time down to $4 million for a Phase One improvement. And, and then, $2 million for strategic parkland acquisition and improvements. That is coming from, we propose, from the general fund, undesignated ending fund balance. So you can see we kind of swapped funding sources for transportation, network maintenance, and for this item. Again, it's just out of considerations as we've dug a little more into what the ARPA requirements would be. This provides us a little bit more flexibility when it comes to the timing of those projects. But also, very importantly for our staff, this would allow a less onerous process of ARPA reporting and all those considerations that come with ARPA. So those are some of the changes to the proposal that we've made, reflecting some of the feedback that we've heard. And at this time, I invite any questions.
Councilmember Mertz, were you up first?
I think I was.
Okay, Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions for Dr. Watling. So first off, across all the various phases of Confluence, what, what's the total cost of the Confluence project? And how much of that remains?
Total, I do not have that information directly in front of me.
Oh, okay.
Could you comment on the phase, Jeff, that's on the other side of the creek where parks maintenance is? We may not have a cost estimate, but that is, I think, where the remaining elements are.
Yeah, happy to. Similar to, I think, the conversation we had last week. Yeah, there is a significant, I think it was identified as Phase Three project that was, in essence, taking the place of the park maintenance, facility maintenance shop. That, I think, master plan and planning work was adopted in, probably, 2015, 2016. So to those dollars, adding a multiplier to those, that phase was probably in the tens of millions to complete still. And then, add, to even accomplish that tens of millions of dollars, we probably need to find another 20 to 30 million dollars to relocate the shop facilities.
Okay. And the second question I have is, what did it cost us to put in the two soccer fields up in the Highlands?
The two soccer fields on Pad One, all total was about 4.6, 4.5 million dollars, 4.6 million dollars.
Okay, so when you put those answers together, what's the ballpark on the visions that you showed for Tibbetts or Memorial? To be, to, all in?
All, boy. All in for Tibbetts Valley Park is probably in the $20 million range. All in for Veterans Memorial Park, again, depending on what you all want to do and the community wants to do with connecting that, those three parks to Front Street, could be in the 10, 10-plus million dollars as well.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that actually, that actually jives with my guess, which is that those two together are about equal to what's left in Confluence. Okay, thank you. You bet. Appreciate it.
Councilmember DeMichele, followed by Councilmember Hunt.
So Andrea, could you walk through the decision to change that 6 million-plus investment into a 4 million and a 2 million? How did we, how did you break that out? And what was the rationale for choosing to do that?
Thank you. So we had heard last time- So we had heard last time that there was some interest in acquiring parkland, especially along the Issaquah Creek corridor. And so we wanted to provide something that was more responsive to some of that feedback that we heard from council. And that's really the main reason.
So if I can follow up on that. So is, so is that essentially the same project that was being, I guess I'm not understanding, is, is the 2 million, which would be land acquisition, going to feed that central corridor park? Or is, is it related to other, other acre parks, or, but it is the central park?
Yes, so the city currently, on an annual basis, typically council allocates some money towards this acquisition fund. Some of it's for hillside areas and some of it's for creekside areas. And what the administration is proposing is having that be a $2 million investment towards creekside areas.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. So I have a series of questions. The first one is, we received an email from a community member who served, longtime resident who has served on the Capital Finance Task Force as well as the Park Board. And I thought this community member's email was very insightful. So I wanted to confirm, if you can just confirm if this is the case, that in this email, it says, "It appears what prompted the administration to promote investment in an anchor park as the primary candidate for the bulk of the remaining ARPA funds is the intent of the ARPA funds to provide support for something transformational and can benefit the entire community. Significant investment is needed in order to be transformational and apparent to the community if allocated to too many projects that will not occur. Transportation project, if one can be established within the timeframe, may not likely have the desired effect." And then also goes into some regional issues. So I wondered if you can confirm if that's the reason for the initial change towards an anchor park rather than the Capital Finances Task Force first recommendation, which is focus on transportation as the priority?
Yes, I can confirm that and add more information, which is that we felt that such an investment in a park where all members, especially in anchor park, that so many different members of the community could benefit from regardless of where they live, that that would have that high impact across the community. That was one of the criteria that the task force had provided, is that it's something that could have an impact across the city. With and for an amount like 4 million dollars, it could have a pretty significant impact on that park, an investment in that park versus 4 million dollars for a transportation project might not have that amount of impact across the city. In addition, when we look at the whole timeline for this strategy, the Parks District is really considered after transportation. But that means that we wouldn't be providing a significant investment in parks until, at the soonest, 2026, maybe once we collect revenues, 2027, if, if that's at the soonest, if we're, if everything is very successful, best-case scenario, right? And so that's, that's some years away. And we heard that parks was important. Seems like there was an opportunity to meet some of the task force criteria and that we could show an immediate investment in parks while we then spend the time that we need to update the strategic plan and go through the process to consider that more longer-term investment in parks later on. So that's another reason why we were looking at parks for a big impactful investment.
Okay, great. Thank you. I thought that context would be, would be helpful. It's helpful for me, anyway. And then my next question is about the applicability of this to ARPA. I think this is a question likely for Chief Financial Officer Hamud. So, you know, I basically looked at the high-level description of what's, can be funded by ARPA, and I wondered if you can just explain how our strategy aligns with those requirements, specifically the parks one, because it doesn't seem that that's, there are a number of, at least in what I read, there's a number of other infrastructure types specified, but I wondered if you could speak to parks specifically as that infrastructure investment.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. That's a very good question. It's evolved. I think that's the best answer. So when, we were initially operating off an interim rule from the federal government. When the final rule came out, there was actually some fundamental changes. And one of the biggest changes that came was that the city was able to take a standard deduction for revenue loss. So 10 million of our total ARPA is actually applicable to replacing anything we can say that we lost. And of course, we had a certificate of revenue loss during COVID that we can quantify that. So beyond that, it's anything that was pretty much already in progress or already part of our long-term plan at the time. So when you talk about the capital projects, that's also money that, that we did not receive that would have gone towards those projects. So with that final rule, it did broaden the definition, because I know what you're talking about, kind of the summary of the bill itself. They talked about broadband, they talked about water and sewer and some other specific projects. The final rule, when it came out, and we've had a lot of interpretations, we talked to AWC, we've been in an AWC work group regarding this, we've actually gotten treasury, direct treasury answers on this, that these are applicable projects for ARPA as long as we show, hey, these are capital projects that are in place. But again, the caveat is spending those funds by the end of fiscal year 2024.
Okay, great. Thank you. And yes, that was the summary, I think, is what I had read, so that was helpful. Okay, two more questions. One is, I don't actually think in our materials that the $2 million that was for the creek corridor land acquisition along the Issaquah Creek corridor, that that's actually specified. If it is, I couldn't find where it's specified. It talks about parkland acquisition. So I'm wondering if, first of all, to confirm that that's the intent, and then also if we need to actually clarify that in the materials.
That is the intent. We're willing to take council direction if, if council disagrees, but that is the intent for that money. And so in the motions that you have before you tonight for consideration, if you wanted to amend a motion to make that more specific, we could do that to clarify the intent.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And last question is on this, the rationale, again, on the 2 million from the general fund versus ARPA. And I guess my question is, if it's $2 million for creek corridor acquisition, that's probably only a couple of parcels, at least, you know, what we've, we've seen. And so I guess I'm just wondering why that's a bigger reporting requirement? Is it something specific just about the nature of acquisition versus improvements? Or?
I'll let Robert handle that.
So there is actually a treasury rule regarding this, so we would actually, to put this as part of ARPA, it would fall into a different category than that $10, $10 million amount that has less reporting requirements to it. And we would need preauthorization from treasury for those acquisitions, and then we would have to actually report on a regular basis to treasury. So there's a lot more red tape, so to speak, for lack of a better term, involved with that. But at the same time, also, we would have to show the nexus between our revenue loss and those acquisitions. So it's a higher test.
Okay, so the, the fact that it's in the CIP doesn't, because you also said if it's in the CIP, then it's in the plans, and so you can demonstrate that that was something we were gonna do. But even if this is in the CIP, it falls into a different bucket because it's an acquisition?
Great, specifically because it's an acquisition.
Okay. And so if we, just so I understand, if we were to do improvements, if we were to acquire a creek land and then do a bunch of improvements, those improvements could be?
Correct.
On the general ARPA?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
Thanks, Mayor Pauli. Robert, I think maybe you don't want to go. This one's, this one's really pretty, pretty straightforward. How hard and fast is the end of 2024 date for spending the money?
At this point, it is hard and fast. Will they amend the rule later on? Can't tell.
Okay. And then my second question, and this might be not for you. I'm spending a lot of time looking at the CIP, and I see all sorts of fun stuff in the CIP, really good stuff that we prioritized just a year ago. And it's not being prioritized right now. And I just can't help but go back to the Smamish Non-Motorized Transportation Corridor. I can't help but go to the retaining wall behind Fred Meyer. And I'm just trying to figure out, how does, how does this jive with the CIP? Are, are we putting the CIP over here for the time being, or what's going on?
For those two projects specifically, Smamish Road, as we affectionately call it, pinch point, we have money that's set aside, including some ARPA funds that council has already allocated for the design of that improvement. So that, that project is underway. There are future years that we still need to fund, but we're going through the design phase. And that's, that's in the plan and that design is, is funded. So that's already a decision that council has made that we are working on. And as for, I'm sorry, what was the other one that you had mentioned? The wall. Yeah. The wall, I believe, is also reflected in the CIP with some funding that has been assigned to it so that we can begin some of those engineering designs. I don't have it in front of me, but I, I believe that's another thing that's in, in the plan.
And both of them have funding in the plan that's identified. Both of them have funding in the plan that's not identified. So they're, they are, they are unfunded completely. And the pinch point, as you lovingly called it, is a $12 million deal. And so we're, we're a long ways from fully funding that one. So I'm, I'm just kind of curious about the relationship between them.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. This is a little bit of a different conversation than what you'll have during budget. So, I mean, again, this is this one-time $9 million pot, but you will take the first year of your CIP, and we'll incorporate it in the budget for you. But you have the opportunity then to move buckets of money to fund the ones that you want to fund. So we haven't put it aside. We have just looked at projects that go through this tighter criteria. Do we already own the land? Do we have to work with other agencies? Can we actually complete it within the two-year period? And so it's not putting aside, it's using a much stricter lens to figure out what could possibly be done. And also provide the community with something that they can look at and touch and feel and see that there was some transformational component to the work. But you have your budget coming, and we have the federal infrastructure package coming, which may also provide funding for some of these large projects that we have that are missing. So it's not put aside, it's just we're using a really tight lens on this one.
Council President?
Thank you. I note in one of the areas, when you're talking about infrastructure and transportation, that you were talking about just maintenance and improvement, so like sidewalks and things like that. Is there a reason, or can you discuss the, any issues with potentially looking at building new sidewalks? We have several neighborhoods that have no sidewalks, no bike lanes, things like that.
Yes, thank you. Part of this is staffing and what we think we can realistically accomplish with the staffing that we have on hand and our staffing requests. And so, for example, if we look at Squawk, we know that there is a desire to have sidewalks and perhaps bike lanes in certain parts of Squawk to better connect that community. There is a study that I think is referenced in the TIP, if I recall, to try to design those sidewalks and make sure that it's going to be safe. So I think there's some progress being made to try to respond to those needs. That requires some engineering, that requires some outreach, that requires different types of staffing resources than, say, a sidewalk maintenance contract that we're going to look outside the city to maintain and improve the current sidewalk conditions. We have a number of sidewalks that, in other neighborhoods as well, that are falling apart and are a liability to the city, too. So there's a lot of sidewalk needs across the city. In terms of repair, it's something that we feel we have the staff capacity to do, largely because we can contract it out and, and really have, make some great improvements to sidewalk quality in different neighborhoods in the city.
Can I follow up?
So on that, in part of the proposal, there are several staff recommendations that would enable the completion of certain projects that have been proposed. Is there a reason we couldn't hire toward the ideas if a proposal came through? So I'm, I'm looking at this as, we have the land, you know, or maybe we don't. So, okay, you can correct me on that. I would love to hear more on that. But trying to find a project that fits the transportation idea if the main problem is staff, whether that's something that could be solvable?
Can I chime in here? I think, you know, Andrea and I are trying to, again, do a better job of setting the table for the conversation tonight. So the big transportation improvements that you all want, that you're all talking about, we need a lot more than this amount of money. We need the transportation benefit district, and we need to get new revenue. So this is not the solution to our transportation woes, our sidewalk maintenance woes, our sidewalk gap woes. This is just a drop in the bucket. So tonight, what we want to focus on is what we can do under those constraints, knowing that once the engineering staff is on board, we will have the bandwidth, if there are new revenues, not the eight, nine million, but new revenues, to actually go to that CIP list and dig down and dig in. But we're not going to be able to do it with ARPA. It's just not, it's just not possible. So cart before the horse, we got to get the staff in the building, then we have to get new money. And that was the primary recommendation from the task force, is that you have two choices. You can continue to fund transportation the way you are, and you will continue to look at your list where you find new revenues. So those are good questions, but we're not at a point where we can make dramatic transformational transportation improvement without a new revenue source. And this isn't the source. This is just a small pot of one-time money.
So now can we answer the question around sidewalks and what our staffing capabilities are and whether or not those would be possibilities?
Yes. I also, John may be able to speak to this better than I do, better than I can as our transportation manager, but let me give first, a first try at it. So we don't necessarily have all of the right-of-way that we need to build sidewalks. In some of our neighborhoods, some of the streets are a little narrower, and so to be able to keep the streets at, with good sightlines and correct widths for cars and emergency vehicles, some sidewalks in some areas really may require additional right-of-way to be acquired from private property owners. And so that's something that we need to study and take a look at and design a system, taking into account all of those constraints. Also, curb and gutter and stormwater infrastructure comes associated with that, with updated stormwater codes. And so it, it tends to get a little bit more complicated, which makes it harder to spend those ARPA funds on time. And would, yes, require additional staffing. And so if that's something that a council really wants us to focus on with ending fund balance or with ARPA funds, then we would, we would need an additional position. Or we would need to really go back and figure out what else needs to come off of our current list of things that we have in the TIP lined up.
So are you saying that you feel like the hiring situation, if we were to choose to go after a position for that and go after a project like that, that we could potentially hire? So it's not market?
Well, there's that consideration, too. We're requesting two engineers at a time when engineers have been hard to recruit for cities for over 10 years. It is the hardest it's ever been to recruit for engineers. We think we're pretty competitive. We have, we have a great organization and great compensation package and great culture, but it's, it's going to be hard, I think, to recruit for those two positions. So, you know, if we have desire to add an additional engineer on top of that, a third person, that's, it's going to take a while for us to be able to recruit and fill that team. I know recently, in our Community Planning and Development Department, you know, some of these positions have taken us six months or more to recruit, and that's just, you know, one position at a time. And so that's, that's something I think we need to take into account in terms of how ambitious we want to be versus what the reality is in terms of what we can achieve regarding our transportation investments in the immediate term.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I have one follow-up on this acquisition. I have one follow-up on this acquisition and Creek Corridor question. And I think, for context, too, this was new information about the change recommending that this was general fund today, so. So there is also the $4 million for an anchor park, which is, in the proposal, that that $4 million would go to the Parks Board and they would make a recommendation, then that would come back to council. But there are three projects, and one of them is the Creek Corridor project, a lot of the costs of which I presume are acquisition. So just to set expectations also for the Parks Board, if the administration is not recommending ARPA funding for acquisition, it seems that that project needs a special note as far as when this goes to the Parks Board. If the Parks Board were to say, you know, that they want to go forward with this one and the administration is actually not recommending acquisition for ARPA funding, it seems that we should at least set that expectation. Because I wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't want it, I wouldn't want them to have the full conversation on all three and then it to come back and say, well, the administration doesn't actually feel that we can do that project with this funding source, which is kind of where you get to with the other piece of the conversation.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. I think it's a good point that you're bringing up, and I know Jeff spoke earlier about some of the criteria that would be considered for selecting an anchor park. And so I don't know if you wanted to talk about that a little bit more.
Just a quick add, that's a great point. There's more of a, not necessarily a question, I think, the point you're making, other than as I tried to identify in the Creek Corridor itself, that is such a large project. There could be opportunity for some type of an improvement project, and maybe it's a trail section we already own that happens to not be on the Creek Corridor, that doesn't require, or the creek itself that doesn't require acquisition. So there might be elements that ARPA funding would be a little bit more readily available. But your point is extremely well-taken, and as Andrea said, whether it's a conversation with all of you or whether it's a conversation with the Park Board, those considerations, those criteria really become our guiding points to trying to identify how to best make an investment before 2024.
Thank you. I'm looking at the proposed motions, and the first one clearly says budget amendment, and that's for additional staff and the multimodal study for I-90 and investment strategic parkland acquisitions. So that's all stuff we do this year, right? We, you get a budget amendment, we start working on that this year. The other two, which is to direct the administration to proceed with the investment in an anchor park and also community investment strategy, or the community mobility investment strategy, those, I don't see a reference to a budget amendment. So I'm guessing those are in 2023, that those with expenditures would have happened? Is there a reason we can't do two and three in the budget process when we look at kind of the holistic thing?
I'm going to pull up in the presentation, I also had those motions, just so that we can make sure everybody's looking at the same thing. So, yes, the first, the first motion focuses on what can we do now and what's the, what are we talking about for 2022? The, I think, third motion talks about the '23, '24 budget. And so, forgive me, Councilmember Ray, which projects were you wanting to move up?
No, I wasn't wanting to move anything up. I was really looking at the number two and number three on the proposed, or the potential motion list and saying, those aren't asking for a budget amendment, so we don't need to take action on them until budget season. So my question is, can we defer this and deal with it as part of budget where it really logically belongs?
So I think that's a good question, Andrea. It's just I'd like you to address whether or not the time delay budget would be approved about the third week of November. Does that have any, would that have any impact on your timeline that you had showed?
I don't believe so. I don't think that would have an impact. I think what we're looking for tonight is really just clear direction from council as we form the budget. As you know, that's a lot of, that's a lot of work to put together. And so if there was clear direction and agreement from council tonight, then council would always have the opportunity to change that during the budget process, right? And so this is just helping direct us to, as we draft the budget, what does council want to see in that budget and making sure that we're reflective of that. So it doesn't bind council's future decision on the budget. It's really just helping us draft that budget and, you know, and take out some of, I think, the guesswork that is involved in creating the budget. So if council chooses not to provide those motions or provide action on those motions tonight, then I think the administration would still move forward with these proposals and we would talk more about it at budget time.
Did I answer your question?
Absolutely. That was great. Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Council President?
Would it have an impact, though, on the kind of next steps for the Community Mobility Investment Fund? Because I know we were set to talk about those next week at the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee meeting.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Yes, it would, because we do want to provide that outreach this year. We're not anticipating any expenditures, because of course we would need to do the outreach and design those projects. So we wouldn't expect expenditures this year, but certainly the outreach we would want to do this year so that we can be sure to complete those projects and deliver them as soon as possible. So that would, that would impact it. So that might be something that, you know, I, again, the administration would still move forward and want to, want to provide that engagement on those projects so that we can have timely delivery of those projects.
Councilmember Ray?
Thank you. That was, that was great, because, and that's all activities that can happen within our existing 2022 budget limitations, right? So we're not needing anything to move forward with that.
That's correct. And I would also add to it, as Director Watling whispered in my ear, the Anchor Park project as well. So we have money in the current budget already for the visioning and scoping work that he mentioned, but of course, any implementation, design and construction, that would be something we would need to put into the 2023, 2024 budget.
So, great questions. Last time when you had this discussion at Committee of the Whole, you had a series of questions to answer, and Council President went around, I believe, question by question, and then it sort of switched to, somebody answered all the questions, so everybody answered all the questions. You've got a different package in front of you tonight. How did you want to approach your conversation before we move into motions? How would you like to discuss the changes in the package? Councilmember Mertz?
I think as a regular council meeting, somebody has to move it and then we talk about it.
Okay.
It would be my perception.
Do we have a mover for the motion? And Andrea, can you put the motions back up again?
Councilmember Ray?
I'll take the first one. Move to direct the administration to return to City Council with a budget amendment for anticipated expenditures in 2022 that would implement the community investment strategy by spending down anticipated general fund, undesignate ending fund balance, and allocate the ARPA funds, including hiring two additional transportation engineers, one program coordinator, one term limited parks planner, the I-90 multimodal study, and investment in strategic parkland acquisition and improvements.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Okay. Moved and seconded. I'll go to the motion maker. Would you like to start, Councilmember Ray?
This one seems really easy to me. This was, these were the things we really, when we had the Committee of the Whole, we agreed on, and they came back in essentially the same form, with the exception of the investment in strategic parkland acquisition improvement. That seems appropriate to me. These are things we want to get moving on, so it seems appropriate to do a budget amendment to do this. We don't lose time. I think this stands apart from the other two fairly dramatically. So I think this is definitely something we need to move forward on.
Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you. I think with the criteria of transformational, moving the needle, transportation-focused, I think it, you know, the strategic parklands acquisition and improvement is a little different than that. But I think as a former member of the task force, you know, I think getting going on the I-90 multimodal study is a big deal. And I think the other infrastructure piece, the infrastructure piece out of that is a big deal. And I think that if I was sitting with my fellow finance task force members, I would feel really good about this. So I'll, of course, be supporting the motion that I seconded.
Sometimes people second just to have a discussion, but any other comments on this? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. So I agree, I also support this. I did want to make it clear that my expectation on the investment in the strategic parkland acquisition is specifically in this Creek Corridor acquisition. And also, I think that that more closely ties into the mobility focus. It's a connection between these parks. It talks about, you know, these are the connections where we would have trails and trails are mobility. So for me, this does check all the boxes, but I, again, I think it's important that we're clear. It's not, it's not actually putting this money into our general strategic parkland acquisition bucket, which can be for hillside acquisition, for example. This is strategic in that it's the Creek Corridor and it's connecting these other parks that are along this corridor and providing those mobility and trail connections.
Councilmember Hunt, do you feel strongly enough that you'd like to make an amendment and add some language to that last bullet?
I think this is providing direction, and I think it's been clarified that this is, this is what it is, but just, I wanted to make it super clear that that is my expectation and that we were on the same page.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Seeing none, it has been moved and seconded to direct the administration to return to City Council with budget amendments for anticipated expenditures in 2022 that would implement the community investment strategy by spending down anticipated general fund, undesignated ending fund balance, and allocation of ARPA funds, including hiring two additional transportation engineers, one program coordinator, and one term limited parks planner, the I-90 multimodal study, and investment in strategic parkland acquisition and improvement. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Is there another motion to be made?
I move to direct the administration to proceed with planning efforts for a $4 million investment in one of the city's anchor parks using ARPA funds, and direct the Park Board to provide recommendations to City Council on which of the anchor parks should receive the new investment.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Joe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. First, I appreciate the sentiment behind the motion that we should go to the Park Board to figure out which park we should invest in. We lean on our boards and commissions pretty heavily for their knowledge and their experience in the particular areas where we may not be as, as up-to-date or, you know, competent in a lot of ways. So I appreciate that as a first point. Next, I think that it's important that we really look at updating our parks as a system. I've got kids that are 12 and 15 now, and with the exception of the Depot Park little new equipment that went in there, I can't point to a real improvement that made those parks better during the time my kids were of the age that they would love to go to a park. Now, we did have the Highlands additions, and those are great parks up there. When I go up there to play, I kind of sneak into the neighborhoods and have my kid play for a little while until he feels uncomfortable enough that we have to leave. I would really appreciate, you know, having parks in the valley that everyone could, could use and take part in and see as an asset to our community. And it's going to take investment on our part to make that happen, and I think this is the first step in kind of making, starting to move that ball forward. And I, it, I think we, you know, the ARPA funds are an opportunity to do that transformational item. It's going to be an item that's going to be seen by visitors and people who live in our community and used by, by both the, by both populations. So I'd be in support of this motion. Thank you.
Councilmember DeMichele, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you very much. I also support this, and I think there was a great presentation tonight, so thank you, Director Watling. I fully support the idea of sending this to the Park Board for their deliberation. As I said at the Council of the Whole, each one of these parks has a terrific rationale for, for improvement and upgrading. We all saw Veterans Memorial Field yesterday, and it was packed with people, but you know that playground looks the same way now, today, that it did when I used to take my grandchildren there when they were three and five. And so it is getting tired and it needs some upgrades. You look at the Tibbetts Creek, and that is going to be a fabulous urban, could be a fabulous urban park, terrific rationale to upgrade that. And then I think Councilmember Hunt at the Council of the Whole made a wonderful rationale for upgrading the central corridor. So we've got three great parks, all of which will benefit our people directly. It will be that transformational thing that we're talking about. And so I absolutely think this is a very valid use of ARPA funds and will be a transformational project, no matter what the Park Board comes back and tells us. And I know that they'll do a good job of going through it in even more depth. So I absolutely support this motion.
Councilmember Ray?
I absolutely agree with everything that was said, and I also think this is an unnecessary step to take. This is actions that the administration is going to take whether we direct them or not, and I think that's appropriate. One of the things that struck me in our conversation this evening is it felt like budget season. It felt like a budget proposal. It didn't feel like, like kind of a normal council meeting, and that's because it is, it was a budget pitch. And so let's do budget at budget time, let's do other business at the other times, and let's separate them, because it's very confusing, to me at least, to be having discussions about budget that we don't have to have at this time. So first motion, act we took was perfect. That was action we needed to take so we can move. We don't need to do anything on this right now, and so I can't, I can't get behind it. So I agree with everything you said. I just don't think it's an appropriate or necessary step for us to take.
Thanks. I think Council President was next, followed by Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. So I also agree that these are budget conversations, and I think it's important to have the budget conversation in a larger standpoint of what do we have, what are our priorities, all of that. Further, when I look at these particular projects, the Veterans Memorial Park is listed in our CIP with a full project cost of $17 million. Tibbetts Valley Park is in the CIP with a full cost of $23 million. If we're being asked for $4 million for this, that's $4 million with another check to come, and we don't have that money. We don't have anywhere near that money. We won't have that money until we potentially have a metropolitan park district. And so I love the idea of a transformational project, and if I had the money to do the full transformational project, I could get on board with that. I just don't like the idea of making a down payment on a project and calling it transformational and putting up plans for the full park and saying, that's what we're going to be able to accomplish, because it's not. And we're not being shown what could be accomplished with $4 million on either of those. And so I'm just not able to evaluate this as a full set of, yes, that's what I want put into the budget, because what I'm seeing here is $17 million and $23 million worth of project, but only $4 million worth of budget ask.
Councilmember Hunt?
Well, first of all, I've been listening intently to my fellow councilmember comments and really interesting and thought-provoking comments, so thank you all. So for me, I think this is a chance to let the administration know where we are with this proposal in a way that they can use for going out for community feedback, for our volunteer board, the Parks Board's feedback. We aren't actually allocating the funding, which we would do at budget, as was pointed out. We are directing the administration We are directing the administration, letting them know that we're potentially supportive of this direction and that they should take this next step. So, for me, this feels appropriate now. I don't think I, I don't share the same concern about this being a conversation that needs to be had at budget because it's taking the next step towards getting the information we would need. That information would come back and inform the budget, which, which we would, would make for a better budgeting process, in my opinion. So, on the, onto the substance of the parks, anchor parks investment itself, I agree with councilmember Joe when he was talking about, you know, sneaking into the Highlands parks. I had written down, when I first moved to Issaquah, I went down to the Tibbetts Park, to the creek in Tibbetts Park, and was like playing along the creek there with, with my kids and really didn't know if I was supposed to be there. The manors there, wasn't sure if this was city property or private property, but it seemed like a creek. It also didn't seem kind of like an afterthought to the park. It wasn't, didn't necessarily, you know, you can always be on a playfield, but then the creek, it felt like, wasn't really sure. And, and that's still the case if you go down there. It's not really clear that this is part of the city park. And, and it's a beautiful creek. And we have, we have creeks like that all through town. And we have this huge potential for creating a connected corridor with this green necklace. We have the natural bodies of water there that we could use to make these connections and have it be a really inspiring and, you know, a thing that sets Issaquah apart from our neighboring communities and makes this a really great place to live. So, I, I really feel that there's that potential there. And I've, I've seen, you know, the, I can sort of envision how it could be changed and realize that potential. And I think with the ARPA funding, it does call for this grander vision. I also understand that it's not enough to fund an entire anchor parks project. The one, and I, I mentioned this last time and I, I will repeat myself, the one that is the smallest total project cost by far is the Creek Corridor Project, which in our CIP, the overall project cost is listed at $6 million. So, with the $2 million acquisition and the $4 million, should the parks board think of it that way, I think that's a benefit. I recognize that there are some other logistics concerns because we don't own all of that land. But on the other hand, because we don't own all of that land, for this one, this one really stands out as something that is very time sensitive. And the costs of these parcels will go up. And now's the time to make this green necklace happen. I, you know, we're going to have more population growth. We're going to have the Central Issaquah Plan and more people coming to the Central Issaquah. And we need to have this green necklace in place before all of that growth because it really, once the city grows around it, it'd be extremely extraordinarily difficult, I think, to make those connections. So, I think now's the time for that project. It's, it's exciting to me. It's the one that's, stands out as transformational. Would love to hear what the other parks board members think about the, the projects that are on the list and how they too could be transformational. But really, I think that that one has this multiplicative power because it connects these parks and it sets us up for a, a future where our parks can be connected and people can walk between them and know that they're in a city, city park and that they belong and that they're welcome there.
Thanks. Councilmember Marts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going to be supporting this measure this evening. And I have more fundamental concerns than it being a budget issue and the, and the timing therefore. I would really love to see the administration restructure this $4 million ask. I really don't think we need another anchor park right now. First off, $4 million would barely scratch the surface, as pointed out by council president, of either of these parks and certainly wouldn't move the needle in the way that the, the finance task force was talking about. But more specifically and more passionately, we need to focus on our existing commitments. We started 15-plus years ago on building our current anchor park, which is called Confluence, we're maybe a third the way through it. I realize the shop is an issue. The shop is one hectare next to a six hectare park. I'm not, I'm not convinced that we couldn't take $4 million and, and move the needle on Confluence in a way that would matter a lot to our city. If we don't want to work on Confluence, let's work on the green necklace, which we've been working on for a decade. I completely agree with councilmember Hunt that that has a different level of value to me than starting another gigantic anchor park. But where I differ is that therefore, I'm not ready to move forward with this measure this evening. And then finally, the third issue is, you know, I've been talking for a very long time. It makes me mad to hear about sneaking into other people's neighborhood parks because you don't have your own neighborhood park. I have been fighting for a decade to get a tiny little park in the middle of the 5,000 people that live on Squawk Mountain. The valley has a ton of parks. The Highlands has great parks. Talis, thank you, has great parks. So, building another beautiful giant park in the valley that has other giant parks while my neighbors go without doesn't feel good. So, the conclusion for me is, when we get to this in the fall, if, if it doesn't pass this evening, what I would love to see is either a focus on Confluence or a focus on the Creek Corridor Green Necklace specifically and execute on the commitments that we've held as a city for decades. Thank you.
Director Watling, can you come up and address a few things? I think what I heard councilmember Marts say is a new anchor park. Are you proposing a new park on the valley floor or are you proposing an investment in a park?
No, none of these would be new parks. This is reinvestment into existing parks.
Okay. Well, I guess the, the second part that was there as well is, is it an option for a motion to amend it and include Confluence Park in the list of items being reviewed by the Parks Board? If that is something a member would like to do?
Could consider that as well.
Okay. And we have almost heard from everybody. So, deputy council president, before we go to round two, did you have any thoughts?
I'm sorry, I'd like, can I?
Oh, go ahead.
Since you addressed my comments, I, I was well aware that you were not talking about creating a new park. But when we talk about an anchor park, right, we talk about a centerpiece park, a park that is a, you know, a centerpiece. That's what anchor means. And so, turning one of those other two parks, as nice as they are, into another anchor in addition, having two anchors in the valley is, is what I was referring to. I was extremely aware that you were not talking about creating a new park. Thank you.
Deputy Council President?
Well, I'm not sure if you've proposed a friendly amendment to the motion maker, but I suppose we can go back to that afterwards. I, I won't repeat everything that's being said. I haven't been convinced that we shouldn't support this motion, so I'll be supporting it tonight. I think I, you know, a lot of my comments last time around were, I really think a lot of these ARPA investments, which really are for creating economic prosperity and stimulating economic prosperity, it's a stimulus in the economy, should be used more for transportation projects. I really appreciate the administration's kind of, I wouldn't necessarily call them changes, but now they're more set in stone and guaranteed that it, things that could go either way are now going to be more focused on mobility. With regard to this particular motion though, and using ARPA funds on a $4 million investment in an anchor park, you know, I think we've heard a number of good reasons. It's going to come back to us again at budget anyways. So, I'm, I'm not clear why we wouldn't support staff kind of doing some planning efforts in the meantime. You know, we heard from Andrea and, and Wally last time around that, you know, an investment like this would be transfer, transformational. It's a larger investment in one thing as opposed to investing in many things, which would, you know, have a greater community benefit. We also heard that it's, you know, more doable, you know, we have to consider what's doable with a smaller pot of capital like, like ARPA, so we can't go too big. Investing in parks in this way would still be aligned with capital finance community task force recommendations. I, you know, I'll still think that, that transportation is a better use of these dollars, but I buy that. That's true. It is. I thought it was an interesting argument that deputy city miss, I can never DCA. I can never say it. I'm sorry.
Just go DCA.
An interesting argument that, you know, if we're envisioning this park district later on, there's really not any kind of, you know, sustainable or big investment in parks until that starts rolling in. That's a really good point that I hadn't thought about too. And then, Wally was the one that brought this up last time, which was this productivity spend barrier as well too and saying, well, we, we feel like we're at this point where we have allocated in our, in our budgeting as much in transportation as we can to be productive because we run into having to have conversations with agencies and stakeholder ring, which takes time to wait back and we don't want to have to, you know, go into a budget amendment next time around. So, we also want to make sure that we're being productive and wise with, and accountable with people's money. So, I wanted to kind of dive into that for a little bit. So, I'm not necessarily seeing why we wouldn't support this motion tonight and I'm going to be voting yes. Those are just some of the reasons why I think a parks investment is in line or is appropriate to. Thanks.
So, we've been around once for comments. I do want to check back in with councilmember Marts if he's looking at doing an amendment No pressure. Although it was totally pressure, but no pressure.
Well, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, for asking that question. You know, as written here, it does not, this, this item does not specify what we mean by anchor parks. So, you know, I don't, you know, I don't feel the need to amend it because if it had specified the specific anchor parks, I, I don't think amending it changes the motion. But thank you very much for asking.
Okay. Councilmember Hunt and councilmember Joe, maybe? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I have an idea, it's a small change, but I wonder if it might, since we have a, a number of opinions on this, on the dais, I wonder if this might provide more information that might be helpful. So, I wonder if we might recommend that the Parks Board come back to us with, with reasons for the different parks, sort of a rationale for the different parks. Because I, again, I sort of worry that this, this is evolving. We got new information today about the acquisition and I wouldn't want them to come back with a recommendation and then there'd be some, some issue as far as that, you know, council thinks that that one doesn't provide as much actual project build out, for example, that that one would require more planning and so that all the money, the $4 million would go much more towards planning. If, if we got new information like that, which then we would have a recommendation in the Parks Board, which wouldn't have benefited from that new information. So, to that end, I wonder if we could have the Parks Board basically provide a rationale for why the different anchor parks, including I think Confluence back on the table, why they would, reasons that they would be good parks. And then we could sort of consider all of those with whatever new information we have and whatever other community information, community feedback, et cetera, all of the other things that we typically consider in our budget process.
You did use the word amendment, but is that more just providing direction or clarification to staff or did you want to propose an amendment?
Well, I guess I will, that would be, that seems that that would be more useful information than a recommendation backed specifically on one parks project. So, I guess I would ask my fellow councilmembers if they agree and if, and then also if, if we think this could be done sort of without an amendment or if you think we should, we should amend it. Because it, it does currently say which park should receive, which to me would be, they would come back with, we think this park.
City Claire?
It's ultimately up to you, but I think providing, if, if you're intending something and it's not spelled out, it, it might not be a bad idea to be more clear, more explicit in the motion.
Okay. I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion for the sake of argument. So, I would amend this motion to be, direct the park board to provide feedback on the, feedback to the city council on the value of putting this funding towards the different anchor parks that are in the parks plan.
Can you read that back, Tisha, if you caught it? And would, would this be an amendment or would this be a replacement motion?
So, as I heard it, this would replace the second half. So, and we could probably work to get this on screen too. So, it would say, direct the administration to proceed with planning efforts for a $4 million investment in one of the city's anchor parks using ARPA funds. That would remain unchanged. And then the second half would be replaced with, and, hold on, give me just a moment, And direct the park board to provide feedback to the city council on the value of putting this funding towards the different anchor parks that are in the parks strategic plan.
Does that capture your intent?
Yes.
Is there a second for the amendment?
Can the maker of the motion just accept that as a friendly amendment?
Who was? Oh, it was councilmember Joe. Can he accept? No.
No, no, however, Chair, you, you could say that, is there any objection to the amendment?
Okay.
There's no objection and you can proceed.
Is there any objection to the amendment? None that I can see.
Okay.
Question of clarification. So, I think as read, and again, we can work on trying to put it on the screen, but I, I heard feedback to city council on the value of putting this funding towards various parks within the park strategic plan.
I think I said anchor parks.
Did you say anchor parks? Okay, great. Then maybe I, I heard incorrectly. Okay. Thank you. And then, but I think that we would want to make sure that, based on the conversation we heard tonight, that, that Confluence is included with that because I think that's part of the intent of your original, of, of your amendment, councilmember Hunt. And so, I'm not, I'm looking at Director Watling, is Confluence identified in our park strategic plan as an anchor park?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Confluence could be included in that conversation. And if I could just get clarification on it. So, it sounds like the desire is more getting rationale back from the park board, not necessarily a recommendation.
Yeah, I think that that would, because there's so many different opinions on this and then there could also be new information, I think that that fuller report back, not just on a recommendation, would be ultimately more useful when this comes back to, for, for us as the decision makers. So, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Council President?
Oh.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through this whole conversation, I just would like us to keep in mind that there's a, there's really an equity component to this. Now, in the sense that I went fishing with my son on Saturday. And when I went to the park, I've probably heard about, I went to the state park, Lake Smith State Park. They've got a new playground there, wide areas for hiking and doing other things. But I walked through that park and I probably heard about six different languages. And I smelled about seven different types of food being cooked on the barbecues out there. And we simply, we don't have that kind of capacity in our parks right now to have multiple barbecues out there where people can gather. And the people were having a great time just being with other family members. They didn't necessarily need a roller coaster. They didn't necessarily need a boat launch or a yacht. They were just having fun as families. And I see that as the vision for our parks here, where we could have passive recreation that can really make a difference. So, I'm not saying that any one of these projects doesn't take equity into consideration, but I would just like us to look through an equity lens, as my dear friend, councilmember DeMichele always says. I thought I would say it tonight so she didn't have to along the way. I'm also supportive of, of including Confluence Park in that list of parks that we look at. And, you know, it's really my favorite park at this point because I can throw my kid into the creek and leave him alone down there while I sun and relax and have a picnic up on the shore. But I think I would use the other parks a lot more too, if there were other passive recreational opportunities, other ways for me to enjoy what Issaquah has to offer. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Joe. And now I forget who was after. Oh, council president.
Thank you. Just adding on to the information that I would find useful from the park board is understanding what could be accomplished with $4 million at each of those locations. And so, I think that, that would be just feedback, don't need to amend, just a sense of. And so, I think that that would be just feedback, don't need to amend, just a sense of what is the actuality and how the Park Board envisions that. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments before we vote on the revised motion? Councilmember Martz?
Point of clarification, where does, so, not to throw a spanner in the works, but where does the Green Necklace fit? That's not, that's not an anchor park, right? But at various points this evening, I think at least two of us have said that that would be, that would be a, seems like a comparably valuable potential use of our $4 million.
Confessional, I'm regretting referring to anchor parks several years ago. There's no magic to what an anchor park is. So, the Creek Corridor is what, for the planning purposes, we've identified as this north-south sort of main spine of the Green Necklace. So, the Creek Corridor would be the Green Necklace. Is that fair, Councilmember Hunt? And I think as you said both.
So, what we're seeing here today is really asking the Park Board to come tell us the value and what we could potentially get for a $4 million investment in any one of several major park systems that we have in the valley. All right, I can support that. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, I will read the motion again. It's been moved and seconded to direct the administration to proceed with planning efforts for a $4 million investment in one of the city's anchor parks using ARPA funds, and direct the Park Board to provide feedback to the city council on the value of putting this funding towards the different anchor parks that are in the park strategic plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
That passes six to one with Council President in the nay column. I know we have a third motion that was also in your packet. However, it was slightly corrected, and DCA Snyder will show us what the change in wording is. Did you want to explain what the change was?
Yes, thank you. So, as you can see, there's text here in a different color. It's that brown color that you saw before in the presentation, and that reflects, that reflects the change in the funding source that we talked about earlier. So, rollover $400,000 of the Undesignated General Fund Ending Fund Balance for Mobility Network Deferred Maintenance. We talked about sidewalks specifically. And that $2 million of the Undesignated General Fund Ending Fund Balance would be used to increase funding for strategic parkland acquisition and improvements. Again, we talked about the Creekside acquisitions in particular. Those would be the changes from the proposed motions in your packet this evening.
Council President?
I just want to ask a question on that. I'm seeing several things in this third motion that are the same as in motion one. So, the investment in strategic parkland acquisition appears to be about the same, and the I-90 multimodal study is the same. And then, we just had a motion related to the anchor park design and construction. So, why are those things also appearing here?
Yes, Council President, I think that has to do with different funding amounts. And so, not all of the expenditures do we anticipate to hit in 2022. We expect some of these expenditures to hit in 2023 and '24. And so, I think that's why we want to make sure that these are reflected in the future city budget as we draft that budget.
I think one of the motions addressed 2022, and this is taking it to 2023, 2024. Any other questions? Anybody wanting to make a motion? Councilmember De Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I move that we direct the administration to proceed to incorporate the community investment strategy within the 2023-2024 city budget, including anchor park design and construction of Phase One, Community Mobility Investment Fund, I-90 multimodal study, rollover $400,000 of Undesignated General Fund Ending Fund Balance for Mobility Network Deferred Maintenance, $2 million of Undesignated General Fund Ending Fund Balance to increase funding for strategic parkland acquisition and improvements, and continued funding for new staffing positions, two additional transportation engineers, one program coordinator, and one term limited parks planner.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, open for discussion. Councilmember Martz?
Well, I actually would like to make an amendment. I'd like to propose striking the words "of Phase One" out of the first bullet point to better reflect the tone of the conversation that we held on the previously passed measure.
Hearing no objection. Can I use that one? Hearing no objection, we would be striking "of Phase One" out of the first bullet. Any objections? Okay. Discussion.
Do you want me to start?
Oh, yes. Councilmember De Michelle?
I actually view this motion as mostly an administrative motion, just to clarify that we want these items to be considered in the 2023-2024 budget deliberations. So, for that, I am supporting it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I, too, see this as mostly administration, administrative, and, you know, sort of clarifying the timeline for things that we previously approved this evening. However, I do, similar to Council President Walsh's question, I guess I don't quite understand. We did say that we're going to invest in the strategic parkland acquisition improvement in anticipated expenditures in 2022, but then we also have the $2 million for the 2023 to 2024. So, is that really, in practice, that would be that if we spent some of that in 2022, then we would spend less in the 2023, and we would, because otherwise, this could be double counting, right? And the same with these other ones. Is that right?
Yes, I'm sorry. We would move forward and allocate the funding according to when we would expect those expenditures to hit. So, thank you for the clarification. It wouldn't be additional funding that's kind of out of that $2 million. So, it is still, it would be determined in the budgeting process.
Okay. And so, it's the, it's really about anticipated expenditures in 2022, and then this one is about anticipated expenditures in 2023, of which there will be components of all these things.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Additional comments? Councilmember De Michelle?
Do we need to make this clear and add the word deliberations after the word "city budget," so that, in other words, we still haven't approved the 2023-2024 city budget? Does that make any difference?
I'm not sure. It's a good DCA question.
So, council, of course, if you want to provide clarity, I think that's fine. You know, this is really just to direct the administration. And so, I think we have clarity in terms of our direction as we draft the budget. Then, that budget is going to come back to council for all of those deliberations and potential changes, and then that budget would be adopted. So, I think we have clarity. If you felt like there might be a miscommunication, then I invite you to amend accordingly. But I, you know, the whole point of these motions is just to try to provide clarity and direction for the administration. And so, pending the vote and the comments from council tonight, I think we would have that clarity without that amendment.
That's fine with me, unless anybody else. Okay.
Any other comments? Council President?
I guess I'm just going to take a moment to speak to the administration and hope that you recognize this is coming from what I'm looking at related to the budget, and recognizing that there is a lot of disagreement and a lot of different ideas here. And so, I hope we can create, I hope you can create, a good story coming into the budget season and a good sense of where we're going and connecting with councilmembers before, because I don't think this has been a particularly easy process for this conversation. And we've had some pretty great budget seasons over the last few years. And if this is what's going to come ahead, I'm just very concerned. And so, I just hope we can take some of the feedback that has come from this and use that toward a future, because I'm concerned with some of these ideas going forward.
Any other comments? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In Confluence Park, there's a little place called Margaret's Meadow. There's also a trailhead off 900 that's named after her, too. That's Margaret McLeod. Many of you knew her. And she was great at getting grants. She was great at finding funding for us. It was just amazing. And I think that this section of the motion, number three, sets out a vision for the future for us, so that maybe by 2023 or 2024, the administration has gotten us some grant funding, has gotten us some other support from the state or other sources, perhaps our private funding opportunities that are out there from foundations, et cetera, that could help lessen that gap, make it more feasible for us to get there. And we're not going to do this all in one big step. We've got to do this in small steps, and this is a great start. So, I'd hope that my fellow councilmembers would support this motion. And I trust the administration is going to be looking at granting opportunities, grant opportunities in the future, as we look at the whole entire picture of how we can make Isqwa a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the reference to former Parks Director Margaret McLeod. Very, very nicely done. Any other comments? Councilmember Hunt?
I have a comment on the Community Mobility Investment Funds, and I am not on the Mobility Infrastructure Committee. So, this is, this will go, the engagement strategy for this will go towards them, and wanted to put forward a comment on that, which is sort of similar to my comments on the kind of feedback I think that would be great to get from the Parks Board. There's a lot of constraints and timing and issues around mobility investments. And so, I would just urge the Mobility Infrastructure Committee and the staff in doing, in structuring that engagement to really make sure that we're getting information that we're planning on using, and that it's, that it ends up being useful in our process, and also that the information is there for those community members who are taking the time out of their lives to do these surveys, that they have the information they need to provide us with that feedback that is ultimately useful. Because I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of context, and I think it's a great idea. I think it has a lot of potential, but I do think it's very important that that community engagement be scoped in such a way, and also that there's an expectation from us and expectation from the administration that we would actually use that feedback in our decision-making process, which means we have to scope it for the kind of feedback we will use in our decision-making process. So, just one additional comment for my colleagues that are on the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee to consider.
We've captured that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll read this really long motion. Is the change in here already? Yeah, that council, no, okay, I'll have to just remember it. So, it has been moved and seconded to direct the administration to proceed to incorporate the community investment strategy within the 2023-2024 city budget, including anchor park design and construction, community mobility investment fund, I-90 multimodal study, the rollover of $400,000 of Undesignated General Fund Ending Fund Balance for Mobility Network Deferred Maintenance, $2 million of Undesignated General Fund Ending Fund Balance to increase funding for strategic parkland acquisition and improvements, and continued funding for new staffing positions, two additional transportation engineers, one program coordinator, and one term limited parks planner. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
That passes six to one with Council President in opposition. Back to my script. I don't believe that we have any more motions on this item, Andrea. Okay, thank you. Computer rent to sleep. Good conversation. Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I, we do have an executive session anticipated for this evening. Given the late hour, I think one of those topics, the topic on cybersecurity, we can postpone to another time.
Thank you.
One of those items, the potential or pending litigation is a little bit more timely. And so, I do ask for council's continued patience to stick with us for that item a few minutes.
Thank you. We have a couple of good-of-the-order items, too, so we may introduce some of them tonight, but also continue those conversations in future council meetings as well. So, I know that Council President has an item, and Council Deputy has two items, I think, one or two items. Okay, so let's start with Council President.
Thanks. I will keep this short. So, Deputy Council President Hall, Councilmember De Michelle, and I met with a few of the councilmembers from Smaimish and Redmond as a way to create some relationships. A lot of the councilmembers are new, and we had a great conversation. There's going to be an ask if anybody else wants to participate. It sounds like they're wanting to schedule a monthly lunch with rotating councilmembers. So, I'll get the details out to you over email. I just really wanted to let you know. We did it. It was great. We would love you to participate. And then, I believe there is also a good-of-the-order request. Yeah, so, there's a council expense request. The National League of Cities Annual Conference is coming up, scheduled November 16th to 19th in Kansas City, Missouri. And Councilmember De Michelle is interested in attending. But we have a financial policy or a council policy that council approval is required for expenses over $500. So, rather than make this a motion, I just thought I would ask if there is any objection to a travel cost of $2,000, estimated at $2,500.
Okay, Councilmember.
I'm not going to object. I just want to get a report back from Councilmember De Michelle on, you know, the, on the conference and what you took away from it, because I think we all should benefit from your taking the, taking it for the team and traveling in this day and age of canceled flights.
Okay, so, it sounds like there are no objections, so the administration should be good on that. And so, that's the two items I had.
Okay, Councilmember Hall?
All right, thank you. So, I'll just be really quick, then, since it is late and we're going into an executive session. So, really quickly, on the community listening session we hosted back on June 15th. So, just once again, a huge thank you to everyone who took the time to come join us and to ask questions and to connect with us about the issues, the pressing issues that are impacting your lives. I think we definitely heard that there was a major interest in public safety and law enforcement from those who attended the listening session. So, from kind of a public policy-making process, you know, I just want to say that, you know, we hear you, and your questions and comments are certainly, you know, on our minds as we head into the biennial budget cycle, as we start to consider whether additional investments are necessary to keep everyone safe, which is our first, foremost objective as councilmembers, and also as we prepare our advocacy efforts for the 2023 legislative session. So, that really goes for all the topics of discussion that came up at the listening session. But once again, thank you very much for sharing your voice with us. For council, based on some preliminary discussions that Council President Walsh and I have had with you, and then also some feedback that we got from community members who joined in person or emailed in afterwards, we're starting to see some potential opportunities for improvement for next time around, too, which is exciting. So, definitely heard from the community there, first and foremost, that they really appreciated the new forum. I don't, I think it's hard to argue that. They really value time for Q and A and would even like to see even more time They really value time for Q and A, and would even like to see even more time dedicated to Q and A, with less of an emphasis on intros and presentations and mingling. So lots to consider here that will be probably coming to ask your feedback on in the future. So, and if you haven't heard from either Council President Walsh or I yet about this topic, you will soon. So thank you very much. And finally, just to our interested community members who either came or are looking forward to coming to a future listening session, stay tuned for details on that. And then I just really quickly wanted to share that you should, residents, you probably should have gotten your 2021 water quality report in the mail already. Once again, the city has met all of our water quality standards, very happy to see that. And I just wanted to do a special shout out to our public work staff. Thanks for all you do to keep our water clean, safe, affordable, reliable, and thanks for all you do.
That's great. I just want to add, one thing for Council's consideration is that I know the Talis Residents' Association may also like to host one of your listening sessions in whatever format you decide, and they're going to let you know the October date, I believe it is, for their meeting. So as you consider what format you'd like to use, you have at least one group that really wants to host you as well. Before we move into the regular session, I'll just go over a couple of upcoming council meetings. On Friday evening, July 15th, there's an informal barbecue with council members and senior staff, and it will be held at Confluence Park. Saturday, July 16th at 9:00 a.m. is the City Council Retreat at Tibbetts Manor to discuss the Strategic Plan and Budget Priorities. July 18th is the regular City Council Meeting with anticipated agenda items, including the Issaquah Clean Buildings Initiative, and this one's going to be super fun. Reception for the Hall of Fame recipients will be held prior to the July 18th meeting, the July 18th council meeting, at 5:00 p.m. at 55 Sunset Coffee and Spirits, and we'll be able to celebrate with all those who have been previously inducted into the Hall of Fame. So we will be having an executive session, as earlier announced, and we will be discussing potential, pending or potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI, and these items are, this item is expected to take a total of? 10 minutes. 10 minutes, and no action is anticipated in open session. As a reminder, executive sessions are closed to the public, and we will now recess into executive session at 10:32 p.m. For those participating virtually, anyone who is not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting, and you are welcome to stay in the meeting until it is reconvened.